If everyone could bow your heads for a moment of prayer. Father God, as we come before you tonight as a town, I would like to say thank you. Thank you for all the many blessings. And God, as we go into this meeting tonight, give us the knowledge, the wisdom to make arrangements for the town that will make it a better place to live. And God, also, if you could just remember people that are suffering, maybe it's from homelessness or whatever they're going through, if we could just remember our citizens that may be going through and having problems. And God, as we deliberate, give us the knowledge to help us make Benson a better place to live. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
And if we could just stand to think, um...
For pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May the motions be approved on the agenda.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Oh. And that's with the addition of...
It's the budget ordinance. It would be the last thing on the new business.
So, under new business, um, if we could consider approval of the fiscal year 26 annual budget ordinance, and it'd be item D.
I make a motion that we approve.
All in favor? Those who opposed? Okay, and now we're going to go into public comment. Anyone wishing to address the board or ask to provide your name and address for the record?
My... I brought it back up to the consent agenda.
You know what? I forgot the consent agenda.
Please. I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Those in favor? Those who oppose? Okay, so now, at this point, we're going to go into public comment. Individuals wishing to address the board or ask to provide your name and address for the record?
Okay, next on our agenda is the public hearing. Tanner?
A.G., you want to go ahead and swear, Mr. Quinn, in?
Awesome. If it pleases the board, could we swear in anyone who wants to speak on the first three agenda items, since they're all quasi-judicial?
I have... It's up to the board, but I think that's a fine idea, because you've got several quasi-judicial public hearings tonight, so anybody who might want to be sworn in to be a housekeeping measure, go ahead and do it all at once, Phil Smith.
This would be for the special use permits concerning 1100 and 1102 Dominguez Lane for the mobile homes and the special use permit for the drinking establishment on Main Street.
All righty, thank you very much. The first project tonight is special use permit 02 to place a mobile home at 1100 Dominguez Lane. The owner and applicant is Luis Dominguez. The acreage is plus or minus .7 acres. The property is zoned RA residential agricultural, which is the equivalent of our R-30 zoning district. The special use permit is required by the UDO to place a manufactured home on the, um, on this residential property. These two maps show that the property is currently zoned RA residential agricultural, and the comprehensive land use plan shows that it is light industrial with some nearby low-density residential. If a special use permit is granted, the owner will still need to apply for a zoning permit with a site plan, septic permit, and building permit. The mobile home must also comply with the regulations for mobile homes set forth in the UDO. The UDO requires that the board consider the following findings as fact in their determination of the special use permit, as well as the recommendation of the planning board, of which the planning board voted unanimously unanimously to recommend approval.
Any questions? Now that, if it pleases the board and Madam Mayor Pro-Tim, if you want, I can go in just a brief reminder about the quasi-judicial nature of the hearing. Competent, relevant, and substantial evidence is the standard that's before you tonight in the record tonight at this, at this hearing, so nothing outside, the hearing outside of what submitted to you in evidence tonight or testified to tonight is what you need to consider. If there's any party other than the applicant and the town through the planning director and staff that wish to testify and offer evidence, then we'd have to get into an issue of standing with them. Before we proceed any further, are there any conflicts of interest or ex parte communications, communications that took place outside of the board meeting tonight, or fixed opinion or bias that the board needs to disclose, any member needs to disclose about this particular public hearing item, special use permit? All right, if there aren't, then the general procedure would be to have the applicant present their case and argument in favor of approval and present any evidence in support of that and call any witnesses they would like to call. If there are any parties in opposition withstanding, then they would be afforded opportunity to cross-examine those witnesses. Then after a conclusion of the applicant's testimony, parties in opposition withstanding can...
All right. Thank you very much. The first project tonight is special use permit 02 to place a mobile home at 1100 Dominguez Lane. The owner and applicant is Luis Dominguez. The acreage is plus or minus .7 acres. The property is zoned RA residential agricultural, which is the equivalent of our R-30 zoning district. The special use permit is required by the UDO to place a manufactured home on the, um, on this residential property. These two maps show that the property is currently zoned RA residential agricultural, and the comprehensive land use plan shows that it is light industrial with some nearby low-density residential. If a special use permit is granted, the owner will still need to apply for a zoning permit with a site plan, septic permit, and building permit. The mobile home must also comply with the regulations for mobile homes set forth in the UDO. The UDO requires that the board consider the following findings as fact in their determination of the special use permit, as well as the recommendation of the planning board, of which the planning board voted unanimously unanimously to recommend approval. Any questions?
Now that, if it pleases the board and Madam Mayor Pro-Tim, if you want, I can go in just a brief reminder about the quasi-judicial nature of the hearing. Competent, relevant, and substantial evidence is the standard that's before you tonight in the record tonight at this, at this hearing, so nothing outside, the hearing outside of what submitted to you in evidence tonight or testified to tonight is what you need to consider. If there's any party other than the applicant and the town through the planning directing, director and staff that wish to testify and offer evidence, then we'd have to get into an issue of standing with them. Before we proceed any further, are there any conflicts of interest or ex parte communications, communications that took place outside of the board meeting tonight, or fixed opinion or bias that the board needs to disclose, any member needs to disclose about this particular public hearing item, special use permit? All right, if there aren't, then the general procedure would be to have the applicant present their case and argument in favor of approval and present any evidence in support of that and call any witnesses they would like to call. If there are any parties in opposition withstanding, then they would be afforded opportunity to cross-examine those witnesses. Then after a conclusion of the applicant's testimony, parties in opposition withstanding can...
All right. Thank you very much. The first project tonight is special use permit 02 to place a mobile home at 1100 Dominguez Lane. The owner and applicant is Luis Dominguez. The acreage is plus or minus .7 acres. The property is zoned RA residential agricultural, which is the equivalent of our R-30 zoning district. The special use permit is required by the UDO to place a manufactured home on the, um, on this residential property. These two maps show that the property is currently zoned RA residential agricultural, and the comprehensive land use plan shows that it is light industrial with some nearby low-density residential. If a special use permit is granted, the owner will still need to apply for a zoning permit with a site plan, septic permit, and building permit. The mobile home must also comply with the regulations for mobile homes set forth in the UDO. The UDO requires that the board consider the following findings as fact in their determination of the special use permit, as well as the recommendation of the planning board, of which the planning board voted unanimously unanimously to recommend approval. Any questions?
Now that, if it pleases the board and Madam Mayor Pro-Tim, if you want, I can go in just a brief reminder about the quasi-judicial nature of the hearing. Competent, relevant, and substantial evidence is the standard that's before you tonight in the record tonight at this, at this hearing, so nothing outside, the hearing outside of what submitted to you in evidence tonight or testified to tonight is what you need to consider. If there's any party other than the applicant and the town through the planning director and staff that wish to testify and offer evidence, then we'd have to get into an issue of standing with them. Before we proceed any further, are there any conflicts of interest or ex parte communications, communications that took place outside of the board meeting tonight, or fixed opinion or bias that the board needs to disclose, any member needs to disclose about this particular public hearing item, special use permit? All right, if there aren't, then the general procedure would be to have the applicant present their case and argument in favor of approval and present any evidence in support of that and call any witnesses they would like to call. If there are any parties in opposition withstanding, then they would be afforded opportunity to cross-examine those witnesses. Then after a conclusion of the applicant's testimony, parties in opposition withstanding can...
All right. Thank you very much. The first project tonight is special use permit 02 to place a mobile home at 1100 Dominguez Lane. The owner and applicant is Luis Dominguez. The acreage is plus or minus .7 acres. The property is zoned RA residential agricultural, which is the equivalent of our R-30 zoning district. The special use permit is required by the UDO to place a manufactured home on the, um, on this residential property. These two maps show that the property is currently zoned RA residential agricultural, and the comprehensive land use plan shows that it is light industrial with some nearby low-density residential. If a special use permit is granted, the owner will still need to apply for a zoning permit with a site plan, septic permit, and building permit. The mobile home must also comply with the regulations for mobile homes set forth in the UDO. The UDO requires that the board consider the following findings as fact in their determination of the special use permit, as well as the recommendation of the planning board, of which the planning board voted unanimously unanimously to recommend approval. Any questions?
Now that, if it pleases the board and Madam Mayor Pro-Tim, if you want, I can go in just a brief reminder about the quasi-judicial nature of the hearing. Competent, relevant, and substantial evidence is the standard that's before you tonight in the record tonight at this, at this hearing, so nothing outside, the hearing outside of what submitted to you in evidence tonight or testified to tonight is what you need to consider. If there's any party other than the applicant and the town through the planning directing, director and staff that wish to testify and offer evidence, then we'd have to get into an issue of standing with them. Before we proceed any further, are there any conflicts of interest or ex parte communications, communications that took place outside of the board meeting tonight, or fixed opinion or bias that the board needs to disclose, any member needs to disclose about this particular public hearing item, special use permit? All right, if there aren't, then the general procedure would be to have the applicant present their case and argument in favor of approval and present any evidence in support of that and call any witnesses they would like to call. If there are any parties in opposition withstanding, then they would be afforded opportunity to cross-examine those witnesses. Then after a conclusion of the applicant's testimony, parties in opposition withstanding can...
All right. Thank you very much. The first project tonight is special use permit 02 to place a mobile home at 1100 Dominguez Lane. The owner and applicant is Luis Dominguez. The acreage is plus or minus .7 acres. The property is zoned RA residential agricultural, which is the equivalent of our R-30 zoning district. The special use permit is required by the UDO to place a manufactured home on the, um, on this residential property. These two maps show that the property is currently zoned RA residential agricultural, and the comprehensive land use plan shows that it is light industrial with some nearby low-density residential. If a special use permit is granted, the owner will still need to apply for a zoning permit with a site plan, septic permit, and building permit. The mobile home must also comply with the regulations for mobile homes set forth in the UDO. The UDO requires that the board consider the following findings as fact in their determination of the special use permit, as well as the recommendation of the planning board, of which the planning board voted unanimously unanimously to recommend approval. Any questions?
Now that, if it pleases the board and Madam Mayor Pro-Tim, if you want, I can go in just a brief reminder about the quasi-judicial nature of the hearing. Competent, relevant, and substantial evidence is the standard that's before you tonight in the record tonight at this, at this hearing, so nothing outside, the hearing outside of what submitted to you in evidence tonight or testified to tonight is what you need to consider. If there's any party other than the applicant and the town through the planning director and staff that wish to testify and offer evidence, then we'd have to get into an issue of standing with them. Before we proceed any further, are there any conflicts of interest or ex parte communications, communications that took place outside of the board meeting tonight, or fixed opinion or bias that the board needs to disclose, any member needs to disclose about this particular public hearing item, special use permit? All right, if there aren't, then the general procedure would be to have the applicant present their case and argument in favor of approval and present any evidence in support of that and call any witnesses they would like to call. If there are any parties in opposition withstanding, then they would be afforded opportunity to cross-examine those witnesses. Then after a conclusion of the applicant's testimony, parties in opposition withstanding can...
All right. Thank you very much. The first project tonight is special use permit 02 to place a mobile home at 1100 Dominguez Lane. The owner and applicant is Luis Dominguez. The acreage is plus or minus .7 acres. The property is zoned RA residential agricultural, which is the equivalent of our R-30 zoning district. The special use permit is required by the UDO to place a manufactured home on the, um, on this residential property. These two maps show that the property is currently zoned RA residential agricultural, and the comprehensive land use plan shows that it is light industrial with some nearby low-density residential. If a special use permit is granted, the owner will still need to apply for a zoning permit with a site plan, septic permit, and building permit. The mobile home must also comply with the regulations for mobile homes set forth in the UDO. The UDO requires that the board consider the following findings as fact in their determination of the special use permit, as well as the recommendation of the planning board, of which the planning board voted unanimously unanimously to recommend approval. Any questions?
Now that, if it pleases the board and Madam Mayor Pro-Tim, if you want, I can go in just a brief reminder about the quasi-judicial nature of the hearing. Competent, relevant, and substantial evidence is the standard that's before you tonight in the record tonight at this, at this hearing, so nothing outside, the hearing outside of what submitted to you in evidence tonight or testified to tonight is what you need to consider. If there's any party other than the applicant and the town through the planning directing, director and staff that wish to testify and offer evidence, then we'd have to get into an issue of standing with them. Before we proceed any further, are there any conflicts of interest or ex parte communications, communications that took place outside of the board meeting tonight, or fixed opinion or bias that the board needs to disclose, any member needs to disclose about this particular public hearing item, special use permit? All right, if there aren't, then the general procedure would be to have the applicant present their case and argument in favor of approval and present any evidence in support of that and call any witnesses they would like to call. If there are any parties in opposition withstanding, then they would be afforded opportunity to cross-examine those witnesses. Then after a conclusion of the applicant's testimony, parties in opposition withstanding can...
All right. Thank you very much. The first project tonight is special use permit 02 to place a mobile home at 1100 Dominguez Lane. The owner and applicant is Luis Dominguez. The acreage is plus or minus .7 acres. The property is zoned RA residential agricultural, which is the equivalent of our R-30 zoning district. The special use permit is required by the UDO to place a manufactured home on the, um, on this residential property. These two maps show that the property is currently zoned RA residential agricultural, and the comprehensive land use plan shows that it is light industrial with some nearby low-density residential. If a special use permit is granted, the owner will still need to apply for a zoning permit with a site plan, septic permit, and building permit. The mobile home must also comply with the regulations for mobile homes set forth in the UDO. The UDO requires that the board consider the following findings as fact in their determination of the special use permit, as well as the recommendation of the planning board, of which the planning board voted unanimously unanimously to recommend approval. Any questions?
Now that, if it pleases the board and Madam Mayor Pro-Tim, if you want, I can go in just a brief reminder about the quasi-judicial nature of the hearing. Competent, relevant, and substantial evidence is the standard that's before you tonight in the record tonight at this, at this hearing, so nothing outside, the hearing outside of what submitted to you in evidence tonight or testified to tonight is what you need to consider. If there's any party other than the applicant and the town through the planning director and staff that wish to testify and offer evidence, then we'd have to get into an issue of standing with them. Before we proceed any further, are there any conflicts of interest or ex parte communications, communications that took place outside of the board meeting tonight, or fixed opinion or bias that the board needs to disclose, any member needs to disclose about this particular public hearing item, special use permit? All right, if there aren't, then the general procedure would be to have the applicant present their case and argument in favor of approval and present any evidence in support of that and call any witnesses they would like to call. If there are any parties in opposition withstanding, then they would be afforded opportunity to cross-examine those witnesses. Then after a conclusion of the applicant's testimony, parties in opposition withstanding can...
All right. Thank you very much. The first project tonight is special use permit 02 to place a mobile home at 1100 Dominguez Lane. The owner and applicant is Luis Dominguez. The acreage is plus or minus .7 acres. The property is zoned RA residential agricultural, which is the equivalent of our R-30 zoning district. The special use permit is required by the UDO to place a manufactured home on the, um, on this residential property. These two maps show that the property is currently zoned RA residential agricultural, and the comprehensive land use plan shows that it is light industrial with some nearby low-density residential. If a special use permit is granted, the owner will still need to apply for a zoning permit with a site plan, septic permit, and building permit. The mobile home must also comply with the regulations for mobile homes set forth in the UDO. The UDO requires that the board consider the following findings as fact in their determination of the special use permit, as well as the recommendation of the planning board, of which the planning board voted unanimously unanimously to recommend approval. Any questions?
Now that, if it pleases the board and Madam Mayor Pro-Tim, if you want, I can go in just a brief reminder about the quasi-judicial nature of the hearing. Competent, relevant, and substantial evidence is the standard that's before you tonight in the record tonight at this, at this hearing, so nothing outside, the hearing outside of what submitted to you in evidence tonight or testified to tonight is what you need to consider. If there's any party other than the applicant and the town through the planning director and staff that wish to testify and offer evidence, then we'd have to get into an issue Then after a conclusion of the applicant's testimony, parties in opposition with standing can, uh, offer any evidence that, uh, directly that they want to on the matter. So the first thing to do would be to call the applicant.
So could I, um, call the applicant to come forward?
My name is Julia Dominguez, and I'm wanting to, the application for the eleven hundred and eleven oh two Dominguez Lane in Benson, North Carolina. We just wanted to have mobile homes put on it, like the double wides, which is trying to do like a compound, like just have, uh, our kids, since they're getting to that age, to have somewhere to stay. So that's why we purchased the land, to put double wides or stick built homes on it, just for them to have somewhere to be. I mean, that's the, that's the only thing that we want to do on it, like.
Um, did, uh, ma'am, Ms. Dominguez?
Mm-hmm.
Right. Did you, did you see the findings of fact that the, uh, planning director put up on the, uh, monitor a moment ago?
Mm-hmm.
The approval criteria and the findings of fact? Is it your testimony that, uh, your application and, uh, supported by the information in the, um, staff report and other materials satisfies those findings of fact that he's presented?
I do, when I did it, yeah.
Okay. But you, that's your testimony that it does, right?
Yes.
Okay. And before you get to the point of deliberation, you need to make a motion to accept the staff report and all of the materials that were submitted by, uh, planning director and staff, uh, in the board packet into the record.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we accept the, uh, staff and planning department's report into the record.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose? And aye for the record.
Yeah, Mayor Pro Tim still votes. Don't go too far. Are there any parties in opposition to this special use permit? Okay.
Okay. So at this point, we need to make a motion to approve or deny the request?
Unless you need more information, you've got what the planning director and staff have presented with you in, in evidence. You've heard testimony from the applicant.
So I'm understanding there was no opposition?
None here tonight.
I make a motion to approve the request for a special use permit, SUP twenty twenty-five dash oh-two for eleven hundred Dominguez Lane to place a manufactured home on the property.
And, and I would just...
And that it meets all of the findings of fact as required.
That would be best, great.
Those in favor, say aye. Those who oppose? Tanner?
Thank you very much. This one is going to look pretty familiar. It is for special use permit, uh, twenty twenty-five zero-three at eleven oh two Dominguez Lane. The owner and applicant is Louis Dominguez. The acreage is plus or minus point seven acres, and the property is zoned RA residential agricultural. The UDO requires that a special use permit be granted prior to a manufactured home being placed on the property. Uh, since this is right next door, again, you can see that the property is zoned RA, and the land use plan recommends light industrial with some, uh, low-density residential nearby. Uh, if a special use permit is granted tonight, the owner will still need to apply for a zoning permit with a site plan, septic permit, and building permit. The mobile home must comply with the regulations of mobile homes set forth by the UDO. The UDO requires that the board consider the following findings as fact for the determination of the special use permit, as well as the recommendation of the planning board, of which the planning board voted unanimously to recommend approval.
Okay. If the property owner can come forward?
Julia Dominguez in eleven oh two Dominguez Lane, Benson, North Carolina. Oh, the same thing that I said?
Same drill.
We were just, for the kids to have where they put something on there, like where they wanted to build, uh, stick built or double wide, um, whatever they chose to be put on the property. That's why, that's the purpose of buying the property was to have for the kids, so they can have somewhere to put something for themselves.
And your testimony is that it meets the approval criteria and satisfies all the findings of fact for approval, right?
Yes.
Okay. And no one in opposition to this one either? I'd make a motion to enter the board, uh, the packet materials from, uh, planning staff into the record.
I make a motion that we enter the staff's report into the record. Okay. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose? Okay.
Now, now you need a motion to approve.
So now we just need a motion to approve or deny the request for a special use permit?
I make a motion that we approve the request for a special use permit, SUP twenty twenty-five dash zero-three at eleven oh two Dominguez Lane to place a manufactured home on the property, and that they have met all of the four findings of fact as required.
Those in favor, say aye. Those who oppose? Okay. Next is Tanner again.
Hello again. I'll be sure to add the, uh, findings of fact to my sample motion on, on future reports here. Uh, but this, this next, um...
Can I interrupt you? I hate to... I'm sorry. So on this one, which I, is, is going to involve a lot more testimony and evidence, and I understand that. But before we even get into that, we need to jump directly to, I don't need to repeat again about the voices. Again, special use per, uh, permit, this is a quasi-judicial hearing. Competent, relevant, substantial evidence is what you need to base it on. That's the information you hear tonight in evidence. Jumping to the matter of, uh, bias or, uh, impartiality, uh, I had a discussion earlier with Commissioner Neighbors, who needs to bring forward, I believe, uh, a something for your consideration regarding, um, a potential need for a recusal. That's something the board's going to have to discuss at this point before we really get into it, 'cause if that's going to be done, then Commissioner Neighbors really needs to get off, uh, quit the dais and get out into the, um, into the, um, uh, audience and sit this one out and not participate, if that's what ends up happening. So I'll let Commissioner Neighbors explain the nature of that potential conflict.
Yeah, so, um, after discussion with Ike, um, in pursuant to requirements for the, for the, uh, special use permit request, I do need to disclose a couple of things. First off, not regarding this particular par, parcel or this project, my firm does have a ongoing business relationship with the property owner who is involved with this. Um, I'm nothing involved with this parcel. No monetary gain is involved in this for me, for this particular project, but I do need to disclose that we do have an active business relationship with the owner of that property. Uh, and I'll also disclose that I have had a conversation prior to this meeting with the, uh, with the business owner that is applying for the special use permit for the, uh, for the alcohol bar. And so after talking with Ike, he's suggested that I bring it to you for your consideration, on whether y'all feel like I should vote on this, and that is totally up to y'all.
I think, and, and, are you ready?
I'm ready. I, I, I think we need to do this a couple different, uh, do a couple things here to attend to this issue. Number one, if the board has any questions for Commissioner Neighbors specifically about the nature of his potential conflicts and his ex parte communications, then that now's the time to ask those questions, so that that's put into the record, so that the board can make a, a proper and complete determination with all the facts. And since on this particular special use permit, I suspect that there are parties in opposition who may have standing, we're going to need to get, uh, their input into this, uh, also, because, uh, if the parties in opposition have no objection to Commissioner Neighbors being involved and, and, um, uh, being an impartial, uh, considerer of the information and, and, and passing on the, on the special use permit, then we could, we could proceed with his involvement. But if the parties have an objection to that, then that's got to be considered by the board as well. Right? So first thing I would do is if you have any more questions for Commissioner Neighbors about the specifics of that relationship, with the specifics of that ex parte communication, then now's the time to ask.
So for the record, you have no financial gains, which is correct?
Not with, not at this time, with this particular parcel or project. That is correct.
Well, my question would be, did you say you talked to the owner concerning this case?
The, uh, yes, I have had a conversation with the business owner, not the property owner, about this, yes, so...
Can the parties, what parties are in opposition to this, uh, special use permit? Mike, is it just you?
Uh, probably.
Is there anybody else that is in opposition to this that would contend to have standing and act as a party and offer any evidence or testify in any way in opposition to this special use permit? Other than Mr. Dart. Mike, you were sworn, right? Okay. Mr. Dart, do you have any objection to Commissioner Neighbors' participation and consideration in voting on the matter?
Can you give me some...
Thanks.
People have what the conversation? Oh, yeah, I've, I've been a frequent, uh, I guess patron of the, of, of the previous business, right? And so we've had conversations about what this, uh, new venture might look like for him and kind of what his, uh, I guess, kind of what his plans were for the property if this was approved. And that's been basically what our conversation has, and so... Uh, I guess I'll go along with that, being a customer, although honestly, frankly, I would be willing to follow this folks' question. I just wanted to make sure I put it out there, so there's no question. That, that was our conversation with, with Ike today, at, and, and the town manager.
Right.
And so that's, uh...
We're going to get into the issue of standing with Mr. Dart directly here shortly. The applicant, do you have, do you want to be heard on this, on the particular issue just of Mr. Neighbors' continued participation in any way at this point? If, Mr. Dart, if you don't have an objection, then it just falls back to the board again, to, it's up to the board. Uh, Mr. Neighbors has disclosed this to you. Uh, the only party here tonight that would have standing and be in opposition has no objection. Am I misstating your... I don't, I won't speak for you, Mike, so...
Yeah, I'll, I'll put my trust in you.
So you don't have an objection? Okay. He does not have an objection, so it goes, falls to the board to vote on whether or not, um, Mr., uh, Commissioner Neighbors needs to be recused or not, based on what you've heard, or ask for more information.
I'll be glad to answer any questions you got, under this.
Well, in, in lieu of what Mr. Dart said, if he has no objections, I don't see what the problem would be. I can, I think he can be objective about it.
Any other discussion?
Okay.
Then, uh, Commissioner Neighbors is, is going to consider, take part in the discourse and deliberation and vote on the special use permit. And I apologize to him for interrupting.
No, that's okay. It's a very important part of the process. Alright, so, um, special use permit zero-seven is a proposal from Reed Johnson to allow a, to allow a drinking establishment at one sixteen East Main Street. The property is zoned B-one central business. Uh, the UDO requires a special use permit for drinking establishments in the B-one central business district. The comprehensive land use plan, uh, identifies this area as town center, um, on that map on the right in the light blue, in the light blue, and the map on the left with the pink is central business B-one. Uh, landscaping and parking requirements are exempted from the B-one zoning district according to the ordinance. The Board of Commissioners, uh, should consider the findings of fact, as well as the recommendation of the planning board for their determination of the special use permit. The planning board voted unanimously unanimously to recommend approval of the special use permit. Any questions?
No, so could we get the property owner to come forward?
While we're doing that, while Mr. Johnson's coming up, come on up, Reed, and, and Mr. Dart, since you are identified, and again, if anybody changes their mind, or I don't want to squelch anybody's opportunity to speak or act as a party, Lord knows, but, um, I'm assuming at this point moving forward, unless anybody rages, uh, the issue again, that Mr. Dart is the only party that would contend to have standing. Standing is a legal concept i- in the, in the construct of, uh, land use approvals and special use permits, uh, quasi-judicial hearings, uh, the, the test is whether or not a party would su- suffer special damages based on the outcome of the, of the special use permit. So obviously, the applicant, property owner, adjacent property owners would have standing. The town has standing, um, and then any party that may be aggrieved or have, suffer special damages if it was approved in his opposition would have standing. Mr. Dart's not had an opportunity yet to really present anything, and he will get that opportunity provided he has standing. But the first question I'll ask you, Mr. Johnson, is do you object to Mr. Dart having standing? And do you want to get into him presenting some sort of foundation for his standing? Because I'm, I'm, don't, again, won't speak for you, uh, Mr. Dart, unless I, unless you want me to just further expound on things, but you would contend to have standing and wish to ask for some evidence, right? So do you have an objection to that?
I, I don't, I mean, I, I, with reading what was up on the, the board, I don't see him having any objection that has standing, so, but I'm not going to object to that. I would gladly let him come up and say his piece to what he would like to discuss with everybody.
You stipulate, then, for the record, that he has standing, and he can offer that?
He is a neighbor, yes.
Okay. Okay. We don't really need to get further into the matter. If you'll stipulate to it as the applicant party, then you can proceed on with your case. Sorry to, uh...
You're good.
Throwing out all these hurdles for everybody.
Hey, it's fine, it's fine.
There's a lot of legal stuff that has been attended.
Um, well, everybody, thank y'all first off for having us, uh, Reed Johnson, Angel Sanchez. We are, uh, hopefully going to open the Letterman. We thank y'all for the opportunity to share our vision for a new taproom and cocktail lounge here in the heart of downtown Benson. Uh, we believe the Letterman will elevate the town's image, offering something a little unique, well-managed, and community-focused. We've seen firsthand through Salvage Heirlooms, which Angel Sanchez is the owner of Salvage Heirlooms, uh, how thoughtful gathering spaces can bring people together and add charm to a place like Benson. We're not just opening a bar. We're creating a carefully curated experience that reflects the character in town, uh, and the character of our town, supports local producers, and encourages responsible social engagement. Think elevated cocktails, local beer selections, warm inviting atmosphere that promotes community over consumption. We envision a space as an anchor that will increase foot traffic, supporting neighboring businesses, uh, and add vibrancy to our downtown, especially during the evenings and weekends when, as most of you probably know, activity dwindles. What we have is, um, people ask, will this increase noise or will it cause disruptions downtown? No, the concept prioritizes atmosphere over volume. More of a lounge, more of a social gathering place than a high-energy bar. Many small towns around us have seen success with smu- with social spaces that we are hoping to open here. For example, Coates has one, so does Selma. They have the same concept that we are trying to bring to our town. Um, in short, our goal is to add lasting value to the town culturally, socially, economically, and to stay true to our character and our values. We're here for questions for you guys and, um, look forward to answering them.
Let me ask you. So you plan to be open on weekends?
Just Saturday for now, yeah.
Just Saturday, okay.
Unless there's like the demand for Sunday, like football games or something, we might, but... Uh, right now, we're open Tuesday through Saturday. On Thursday, Friday, we usually, those are our busy nights. Uh, we usually close at ten P.M. Uh, Saturday, we close at six because it slows down, so... Uh, we hope that this would increase, uh, business on Saturdays and, you know, that it would also trickle to the neighboring shops as well.
Mr. Dart, you want to cross-examine them in any, uh, subject they got into in their direct, uh, testimony?
Let me check. I've got a thing I want to read, and I've also got stuff I want to present to the board. You know, I've uncovered a lot of things, but I hate to...
You don't need to get in, that's totally up to you. Generally, it's, it's kind of like, uh, if you ever watched a courtroom drama on a movie or... You don't need to get in, that's totally up to you, generally, it's, it's kind of like, if you ever watched a courtroom drama on a movie or something. The, the, the plaintiff, or the, in this case, the applicant goes first, presents their evidence, the party gets to cross examine their witnesses, that's where we are now. Then, once they're done, that's sort of their presentation, now it's your turn, then you present everything, they get to cross examine you. So that's kind of the way it's gonna play out. So now, you don't have to present, now's probably not really the time for you to present more new information, but just to cross examine or to ask them questions about what they just testified to the board.
Well, I'll just ask you one thing because it ties into, you know, my main concern with this whole thing. You guys have these plans, but nothing says that you or the future owners and operators can't change those plans. If this is approved, ask your question.
The way I was discussed, or this was all discussed by me, is anybody who would open a new establishment that would require, would have drinking, would have to come straight back through the special use permit.
If it, yeah, please, if the...
A special use permit does run with the land, it does not run with the owner, so Mr. Dart is correct that someone could theoretically buy the business, buy the building from these gentlemen and continue to operate a drinking establishment of another nature.
Anything further on that?
I owned the building.
Okay.
No, I mean, that's it.
I meant, as far as more testimony?
No, they would have to buy it from me, but yeah.
Any more witnesses y'all want to call?
No, that's it.
I've got, I think it's great to put anything in a empty space, have no problem with the drinking establishment or anything else you put there. My problem that I have got, this is, it's Gilbert Alley, right, that runs from Main Street all the way through?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all I can see there is parking being an issue. Okay, you say, well, there's not gonna be that much parking, but there's not any parking there now. What's the little alleyway that runs right directly behind Larry's old building or your building and goes over to Market Street?
It doesn't have a name, I don't believe.
I, I, I do not see a name on it, but that backs up to Levison Law Firm.
It does.
On the corner and, uh, uh, the, oh, even the Chamber, yeah. Several things, and there's, there's not the space that we have at the other end where we have the, the streets blocked all four, for this. It, it's a real concern at some point in time to come back and say, well, why don't we close Gilbert Alley? Well, that alley is used a lot, and if you will look, you've got another establishment going in toward the end in the old Danford McLam. And that's, that's somewhat, from what I understand, maybe some apartments and also a new brewery going in there. We've got a parking problem right now, the biggest problem in the world we've got. Are we adding to this? And then you say, well, we're not going to generate that much. How many, how many cars are going to be parked just between, say, um, just between the alley where you pull in? I know Loretta Bird parks her vehicle there, it's a one-way right now, it's a one-way street. How much congestion are we gonna have, even come up at, at Mule Day? I mean, Eleanor Bar was never a problem until Mule Day, and they decided to have a, a live band out there, and then we had a big problem with no restrictions. I would really like to see what kind of restrictions in, in parking.
Okay.
Not with drinking, I mean, you're selling insurance and you're selling alcohol, so you tell me.
I got you, yes, sir, no, that's a great question. Well, the, the size of our building, which I thought I saw Allen, Allen's right there, the size of our building will probably only hold about twenty-five to thirty people. So, there's that, first off. Secondly, Mike himself has come out and claimed that we need to have parking spaces marked on Gilbert Drive, which we don't. That being said, beside my building personally, not counting my marks, I have three parking places that are designated every day for my patrons to come and stop with me. Not counting the two in front of my business personally. When our hours of operation are going, the only car I ever see is, is Mike's. So, there's literally nobody downtown in our area. Maybe Mule Days will be the concentrated, the outlier that we're discussing, but if we're going on the basis of a normal fifty-two week year, fifty of those weeks, we will not have a parking issue at that establishment. Just simply because I, I also talked to Mr. Maynard, who owns the building where Lindsay parks, and a lot of the people park to go to the shops over, like in front of, I don't know if you know where the Royal Boutique is? They park three cars there. The Davises park beside them, which is also the building next to where we're talking. So, in hindsight, if we're just discussing solely parking for my establishment, I got about eight to nine spots that we could utilize. If we get to use their three, three on the side and three in the front. Now, most of the businesses after five are closed, so they could park all the way up and down Main Street, and it shouldn't bother anybody, except for this gentleman beside me, because, like I said, he's there after five a lot. Not a good thing or a bad thing, it's just a fact. So, really, in parking, we're not necessarily worried about it because we're not gonna have that many people. If we can only fit twenty-five to thirty in there, everybody doesn't drive a car by themselves.
So, none of the stores on Railroad, the dentist office, Matt Moore's wife's dentist office, Joe's Bakery?
They're all closed by five-thirty.
None, none of those will be affected any at all as far as parking at any time. I, I understand your hours and what you're doing right now.
Sure.
But if it, if it will hold thirty-five people, and it's such a big blast and everybody starts going, so you take up the next part of that, so it will hold sixty people, um... I mean, if it's, if it's that good, if it's running that, that good, is it going to affect the parking down the road?
I, I don't foresee it affecting parking downtown at all. I think, I think the bigger thing would be to flip that around and say, if I can get that many people downtown to park, wouldn't that help the other commerce down there? Not necessarily to hurt the parking, but to help other businesses with patrons. One of our biggest problems in our city, in our town, is that we don't have the people to come down and spend their money. They leave and go other places and go do other things. So if we can come and establish something that will actually bring them there to spend money, Lindsay's all on board. We've talked to a lot of the other businesses around, and there's nobody complaining. We would love to see parking be a problem, and I mean that as not like being funny or mean, I mean it in a sincere sense of we need the bodies to spend the money. And if we can't get them there, that's kind of where we all are. If we only, if we open from three, three o'clock in the afternoon to ten PM at night, our parking should not hurt or hinder any other businesses around, is what we've, is what we've come to find, just speaking with the other businesses, because we've talked to all of them around. And there's none of them here to, in opposition for us, just because of that reason, to understand that, hey, if we can get the people down here, maybe they'll walk into Royal Boutique with a glass of wine from our shop if we can expand the social district, and maybe they'll spend fifty bucks on a dress, or, you know, do something there. We talked to Ms. Nadley, Morgan's on Main, if it becomes a social district over there, she said she's not opposed to letting you walk over with a glass of wine in her shop. So, we're, we're actually trying to help facilitate more than we are trying to hinder and, and hurt parking. So, I, I don't foresee, Mr. Chandler, that being a problem. And, and if it is, like you said, if we can get it to where we got the whole building filled up with people and stuff like that, that would be, that would be wild. They would have to kick me out of the front of my own building, but it will be interesting. So I don't, I have it, I have the middle rented, I have the front, it's my spot, and we're just trying to do kind of a speakeasy vibe in the back to make it something where people can go, relax after they get done with work, and, and just kind of have a cocktail or a beer and watch the game. The open's on right now, we'd love to be playing it in there. So if you like golf, that would be kind of what we're looking for.
Like I said, that was the biggest concern that I had when I found out anything about this and writing through. Don't see any problem with what's going there, I just see a problem with the surrounding areas right now and what kind of problems that we run into every day. And all I need is somebody to come up and say, this is a big thing, let's, let's shut down the alleyway all the way through and so we can have it as parking everybody in that area.
Well, Gilbert Drive, we never want that, we don't want that shut down or, we, we're not, we are not here for that. We actually, I, I've requested a few times, as Mr. Dart has, let's get some lines drawn in there so we can actually see where the parking spots are. Because, like I say, I have three cars lined up on the side of my building every day, not counting the two that are in front of my shop, and the, the building beside me is vacant. And so, no, people who can park there can go to Lindsay's, they can go to mine, or they can go to the Chamber. And basically, the back is empty by five o'clock, the back is empty.
Well, I think really what triggered that for me is when you were starting your remodel, I had several people interested in the dumpsters.
They loved it.
And we had to, to move one because they couldn't get in or whatever.
That was JP.
I never even thought about anything else going into, I thought you were taking the whole building, and when I heard that, I thought, if the dumpsters are a problem, is parking gonna be a problem?
Yes, sir, well, we, we've kind of figured it out with everybody back there, we think, and it just took a little bit of rearranging, but we just don't have designated parking lines either to, to show where what is. So we can't, it's kind of like when people park beside the building beside Mike's building, which is facing mine on Gilbert Drive, the, I don't know, a real estate office or whatever it is, they park along there, and then the people are parking along mine, so it's literally a one-way street right there.
Where do, where do the people, Maynard's building, Maynard Barnes's building, that the Hispanic food store, where are they parking?
They go to Dunn, they're never there. They went to Dunn, they opened up a place in Dunn, and not, I don't know if they still are, I have no clue on that aspect, I just know that they're never there because Lindsay has two people working at her shop, and both of them drive cars, and they park directly behind my building at Maynard's building. And then the Davises typically have two cars, if not three sometimes, and they're in a line right there, and then the Stewart people park across from that new building that's been utilized by that couple.
I know what two sisters had to do, they had to rent the parking lot over on the end of Parrish Drive and Market, spaces in there to have parking because parking was such a problem.
Yes, sir, we don't, we don't foresee us...
Don't want to take a, a way of any business that is already there because we sat here and overlooked anything. Like I said, the establishment doesn't bother me a bit, okay?
Thank you, yes, sir.
It's, it's just getting in and out and what could change six months from now if it was a great thing.
That's fair, yes, sir, oh, well, I, yes, sir.
Okay.
Any further questions?
Mr. Dart, you want to ask him anything about what they just talked about?
May I entertain the motion?
No, at this point, any more, any more testimony, evidence?
In favor.
Witnesses, y'all want to call, anybody else want to speak in favor?
It mattered to me, I mean...
Now, you're not calling, Mr. Boucher. Mr. Boucher would come up as a witness only, that's up to the board.
He's a downtown, he's a downtown resident.
You're not continuing to talk as a party with standing, are you? Okay, he's coming up just to speak as a witness, you've been sworn, all right, so, which is all this, at a basic level, all is required. The board can allow witness testimony, they can't participate as a party with standing like Mr. Dart can, obviously, but that, unless the board sees no relevance in it and decides, you know, I would say, generally speaking, in the past, this board has generally always taken a pretty liberal approach with allowing people to speak. Just a reminder that you need to keep your comments and testimony to the subject matter at hand and try, or really, you, you need to stick to factual testimony about the findings of fact and the stipulations required by the special use permit, not so much just opinion. But with that said, unless there's any objection, it's certainly fine that Mr. Boucher speak on his own, in his own regard, on his own volition.
Okay.
With that said...
So I just wanted to speak briefly, just as, I said, as the board chair for Elevate Benson, which is a downtown economic revitalization group. We've been in place for about two years. Both of the gentlemen that are here are active within our group, both as not only property owners but business owners. They've been vested in many of the different activities that we've done. I can speak to the fact that the North Carolina Main Street, which is where we get a lot of the basis for a lot of our information, encourages a downtown that is what they refer to as a eighteen-hour downtown, and if you can create a twenty-four-hour downtown, that's even better. Twenty-four-hour downtowns basically mean that you've got upper story residential living. Eighteen-hour downtown means that instead of just having a eight-to-five or nine-to-five businesses, that you also have establishments available in the evening, or restaurants available in the evening. The longer that you have of a downtown, the more vibrant it is for your community, and it helps to be able to create a, a better economy for the businesses that are in that community. That's pretty much all I wanted to speak today.
Thank you, is there any more questions?
Mr. Dart, you want to go in any of that?
Can we get restated what the hours of operation were, what the proposed hours of operations?
Any party to come up and offer you any more evidence you need?
Mr. Johnson? Can you restate for me what the hours of operations were, what the proposed?
Yeah, we're looking basically three to ten.
On what days?
Tuesday through, or Tuesday through Saturday. Obviously, football season, depending on the crowd, depending on how people feel, and we'll watch, if somebody will come on Sundays, I don't know if y'all been to our town on a Sunday, but you can drive through and the tumbleweeds go by us as well, so there's not a lot of people out, but if they'll come out and watch a football game, we might, would open up and be there for them. But, right now, we're looking at Tuesday through Saturday from three to ten-ish, so, or three-ish to ten. That's basically what Salvage Heirlooms has opened up now, so we're not doing a whole lot different than what the current business is doing, or Mr. Sanchez, Angel's business is doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, may I, unless there's additional questions?
Now, now would be an opportunity for Mr. Dart to, if there's no more evidence from the applicant or any other witness that would like to speak in favor, then it would be Mr. Dart's turn to present his case and his evidence.
Mr. Dart, did you want to, Mr. Dart, if you have any?
And when you speak, would you speak in a microphone so I can hear you?
Mr. Dart, make sure to give a copy of that to the applicant, and, and then we'll ask if there's any objection from y'all about what he's intending to, if he's gonna put it in the record and get it in front of the board.
Ike, this does need to be entered into the record?
If the board wants to enter into a record, then, and it's, then yes. Before you do that or make a motion in that regard, Mr. Dart will provide a copy to the applicant, can review it with whatever time reasonably you need, and then if there's no objection, then Mr. Dart would ask you, I would assume, to enter that into the record. Mr. Dart, you offer what evidence you have about the source of your materials or where you got it from? So, Mr. Dart said he Googled it and it's printed out a Google search, there's an attachment as well, you wanna go into that? The, it looks like it comes from UNC? Well now we're just focused on the, the question of the, of this, so let's, let's keep that just for the moment if we could. So, Mr. Dart's testified that he pulled this from a Google search and then, I guess, uh, Mike, from a website, this UNC uh, injury. So, so that sources, you, you're testifying that sources University of North Carolina Injury Prevention Research Center, right? And that's where you sourced it? Mr. Johnson's not stipulated that that, that he's agreeable for that being entered in his evidence, so it's gonna come down to a board vote. As to whether or not this is evidence that you can actually consider. Now you're looking at it. I appreciate that. So, so the, the question is whether or not you can, you can give it weight and consider it, right?
So how, how does that work? I mean, I know how it works if I was doing paper, but for us, how would it work?
So, somebody will make a motion to either uh, accept this as evidence and enter it into the record or make a motion in the inverse to not accept it into evidence?
And what we, what we base it on? That it wasn't scholarly due?
Well, that, that, um, no, I mean, at this point, the source, you've had, uh, you know, Mr. Dart testified that he pulled it down from, from Google. So, so they're, they both have given you testimony, consider you wanna ask more questions about that. But Mr. Dart's propounding this evidence to you, so he's the one with the burden to demonstrate the source of it to your satisfaction, so that you feel confident that you can enter into evidence and actually consider it in your deliberations of whether or not to grant the S U P. And if you don't feel like you have enough right now, you should ask more questions.
I, I'm trying to, to see how this stuff relates, cause it's not relating to me. I'm half here and half of what he's saying. The next part about it is this.
Actually, it relates in, uh, it relates in that theirs is just a general request. There's no specific thing about it. What they're saying they plan to do, which I don't doubt is what they plan to do, but the zoning request allows whoever is in that building to do anything within the law, you know, that that special use permit would allow in that whole building, including all the way to Main Street and everything. And, you know, they can be open any hours that state law allows, including to two AM, you know, most mornings and everything.
Mr. Dart, I, I know that's, this is, it's your opportunity, this is your, but we're just talking about the source of this, right? So they needed to make a determination first and foremost about the admissibility of this evidence that you prevent. So maybe get into where you sourced it from and, show him first. Well, there's no need to argue it, so, so more, more. More important would be to maybe delve into, further into, you know, what did you Google and what source did you find it from? I mean, if it was a particular website, then, then what website, you know, that would?
Well, if you'll, if you'll look at the thing, uh, everything has a link and some of them actually name the sources like Revard Newsbeat, P I R G, um, Brookings Institute.
What's not covered in, in what you had given us before?
Well, that, oh.
All this stuff that you've already had it notarized?
Oh, well, I hadn't looked any of that stuff up when I wrote the thing for the planning board and everything, so I get into a lot more stuff.
Uh-huh, but some of it, some of it is covered.
Yeah, some is, some's not.
It is right in here.
And again, you know, I have. The sourced or non-sourced, if you wanna call it that, information is, you know, I went ahead and attached what I was gonna speak tonight and everything, which basically is me testifying, you know, so.
We'll get to that, but uh, at this point, you need to make a determination about Mike's physical documentary evidence. If there's more information, again, Mr. Reese, I stipulated to it, he's uh, testified uh, in opposition to its admissibility with questioning the sources. Uh, Mr. Dart's told you where he's got it from and um, the document speaks for itself as far as what it appears to have located or listed on it in terms of apparent Google search. And then the other document, it looks like a UNC scholarly journal paper. What's the thoughts of the board about the admissibility of it?
Mike, is there anything that's gonna be in this that is different than what you're fixing to state when your testimony on standing? Because, I mean, in my opinion, your opinion on your testimony is gonna be just as good as this right here because I could go into Google and type wise the sky purple and get this same list in AI generation about how weather sometimes makes the sky purple. And so I guess my question is, is, is there anything on this pa- paper that you're not fixing to cover in your verbal testimony that would require, I don't say require, but would, would push me over the edge to want to enter this as factual uh, evidence?
I can't say it for a hundred percent. I mean, some of the stuff has more detail that, you know, I didn't wanna get into because I thought it was already in there and everything. Um, I tried to hit all the highlights in what I'm gonna speak, so yeah, I mean, uh, I guess to some degree, you could say it is covered and everything, um, if there's, you know, that much objection to it.
What you, you've given, and I still haven't figured out, uh, really all the time that you've put in this, I, I'm tickled that you've done it because I've never seen this much writing from you in the paper about this. Okay? So, this right here, everything that I see is kinda covered right here. And uh, I think we ought to probably get on with it and I don't see anything here.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Johnson? Do you have a objection discreet or specific about the admissibility or veracity of the UNC Injury Prevention Center information? Alright, so he's got no objection to that part of it. I think that then we've limited it just really, Mike, to the, the Google search and maybe that could have been, you know, he's, that's, that's the testimony or allegation um, in, in controversy of what you're trying to do that Mr. Johnson's put forward. So, um, it's up to the board, but with that being said, there's no, you could stipulate that that being entered into the record. And you offer more testimony, I, I'm not cutting you off for short. You wanna talk more about where this actual Google search information come from. Um, but uh, that maybe would be addressed also in your.
Yeah. I, I mean, I'm not arguing the point, I'm just answering the questions, you know, so, um, I'd like not to be standing up here forever either.
Is it agreeable, then, not, again, not putting words in your mouth or pushing you in any direction, but if we, if there's an objection to the admissibility of the Google search but not the UNC article, then the board could stipulate that that being entered into the record and then you could proceed with your case and testimony?
Yeah, that's the board's decision.
You ready for a motion?
Can I make a motion?
Yes.
I make a motion that we enter into evidence, the report stated by Caroline Pluit, MPH, on Alcohol Social District, Central Carolina, by the UNC Injury Prevention Research Center, and that we admit all of the Google search engine documentation.
And just for clarity's sake, that means you're not gonna consider that, right? It's not in evidence and that's something you're not gonna consider. So when you deliberate, not to be, to admonish you, I apologize if it sounds like I am, but you should be keen to not consider the Google search, just the UNC article. And then of course, any other evidence Mr. Dart wants to present in his testimony.
And Mr. Dart?
Alright, well, it's not in my thing, but again, to make clear, we're not dealing with Reed and Angel's plans because those plans can change whether by them or in the future. You know, I mean, we hope we'll be around a long time, I hope I'll be around a long time and everything, but we, we never know, something might cause him to leave. I mean, he just bought the building, he used to be Larry's for a long time and everything, but, you know, things change. So, somebody else could come in, the special use permit would be approved for the property. Whoever comes in can open the bar all the way to Main Street and, you know, all their plans could go by the wayside and something could come in there that we would be unhappy with and wouldn't just affect that building, but could affect many other things, which I'll get into. So if y'all will permit me, I'll go ahead and read this and we'll try to bring this to a conclusion. Uh, hopefully, you have already looked at the letter I submitted to the planning board meeting, however, I have more to offer. Was in the packet, but anyway, uh, and verbally as a result of that meeting. Uh, three other things to get out of the way first. The primary job of government is to protect people, not help businesses, although there's nothing wrong with helping businesses if it doesn't conflict with protecting people. Related to this is providing a wholesome atmosphere. Once you start chipping away at that, it's like an area where one broken window or rundown building begets others until all are like that. Then let's be clear, we are talking about a bar, no matter what it is called. A bar primarily serves alcoholic beverages. A tavern traditionally serves food as well as alcoholic drinks, often hearty meals and traditional fare. No details of the neighborhood meeting were provided in the meeting packet that I received, but I was told there that the bar would not be serving much of anything in the way of food. Also, we're not really, we're really not just talking about a bar in the back of a building fronting Main Street. If the application is approved as is, a bar could be located any part or the entire building. Reed and Angel may not ever be planning this, although if business was good enough, I'm sure they would at least have to consider it, as I think Will might have mentioned and everything. Plus, they will not always be the building owner and business operators. Approval of the application for a bar in the building will be forever unless an application for something else is submitted someday. So then, we must consider the impact of having at least one bar on Main Street. Any bar can contribute to negative effects on individuals and communities. These can range from public safety concerns like increased crime and drunken driving to individual health issues related to excessive alcohol consumption. A more detailed list was among the information that I provided you. A bar with high visibility, either right on Main Street or having signage directing people from Main Street, could further normalize drinking culture for adults and youths. Again, leading to the aforementioned concerns and possibly stretching police and other, other government services. Plus, these possibilities, or more accurately, likelihoods, excessive alcohol use already costs North Carolina nearly ten billion dollars a year. Uh, run counter to the planning board's finding that the application will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located or proposed and developed according to the plans they've submitted and approved. This finding, if not false, also cannot be backed up because what was approved is beyond what was submitted if you consider the latter to be what the applicants said they planned, as the planning board seemed to do by recommending it without conditions. The building owner and the bar operator said the bar would be in the back of the building, but the application the planning board recommended approval of is for the whole building. So again, anytime, at any time, they or future owners and operators can have that bar take up the entire building, which would put it on Main Street. Even off Main Street, again, there is gonna be signage directing people to the bar. The packet I received also does not contain minutes of the planning board meeting, but questions and answers by the planning board members may have resulted in false understanding for themselves and others. They were told the bar could only. They were told the bar could only hold about twenty people, but that was only if talking about the backspace, and presumably only if talking about people being seated. In fact, it could be sixty or more if you're talking about standing room and/or the bar taking up the whole building. In addition, young Mr. Byrd was told approval would not set a precedent, but it would. Yes, a special use permit would still have to be approved for another Main Street building to have a bar, but legally, what is gonna be the town's basis for denying it once it is allowed this one? I would not, I would think the new applicant would argue to a court that a desire to limit the number of bars is not sufficient, maybe even more so if this one has not yet expanded to Main Street. Then if it did, you'd have at least two. If you count the brewery just off Main, current and potential restaurants on Main that could have alcohol, all of a sudden, you have a lot of establishments with drinking downtown. Plus, I've questioned whether approval would confirm to the standards and practices of sound land use planning, another finding of the planning board. This is not just a swap-in location, by the way. Technically salvaged heirlooms included the bar only because of a loophole due to it being primarily a retail establishment. But even then, most people would not know there was a bar even before it was moved to the back of the building. The new site being a bar would be evident and promoted as such, and would change the flower, flavor of downtown even before, but more so if it expands to Main Street. What would be the effect of these optics on the attractiveness of the town and other businesses? Then there is a finding that approval won't substantially injure the value or be detrimental to the use of the joint properties. Bars can injure property values. They also can result in noise and disturbance, particularly during late hours, a concern expressed by Mrs. Byrd at the neighborhood meeting, which would increase if the bar was on Main Street. Angel said they were looking at closing at ten. Still, during a time I might be working nearby, but initial or future owners and operators could keep the bar open as late as 2:00 AM by state law. Then there's the possibility of increased crime. Even sizable offenses and misdemeanors can be a problem and lead to greater ones. I've had people block my driveway parking in the alley. I've had at least one person get very angry when I pointed out he was trespassing by crossing commissioner neighbors in my property from wherever the street at the alley. What had been someone perhaps more violent, especially if inebriated, the likelihood of more trespassing and blockages would increase with the bar, as there is less off-street, off-Main public parking available than there, where salvaged heirlooms is currently. Reducing the parking provision on Main would be, have to be looked at, although that would create its own problems. That was one thing, we didn't have anybody up here to check with that on, but, you know, you can't park at Main or you're not supposed to after a certain hour, as I said in the planning board letter. Fortunately, the police have been pretty nice, and they haven't, you know, given me a ticket or given Natalie's husband a ticket, you know, for being out there past those hours. For them to have parking, you know, on Main Street for their customers, there would have to be a change in the parking ordinance. Then there is increased possibility of accidents. Already even law enforcement vehicles come out of the alley the wrong direction. If there hasn't been an accident yet, what are the chances of accidents happening if one or both of the drivers coming in or out of the alley having reduced reaction time to alcohol, due to alcohol in his or her system? And let's not forget about the roundabout. I'm not gonna spend much time on the idea of the bar being in a social district, which was discussed too much at the planning board meeting and perhaps here, as that requires a separate approval. But I will say that it would be unfair if a business had to put up with noisy alcohol-carrying pedestrians, not only nearby, but passing. All these things should be considered before the application is acted upon, and any approval should include conditions addressing them. And that's basically it. Again, it's nothing against Reed, nothing against Angel. I'm just trying to look out for not only myself, but, you know, the town, businesses and community going forward, you know, whether it's next week, next year, next decade, you know. Again, this thing is forever if it's approved as is. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, you wanna cross-examine, go into that, detail on any of that?
I just wanna say we've been there seven years with no issues. We do have beer on tap, we have wine. We also host trivia night on Thursday nights. We do theology on tap for Benson Baptist Church, they come in, drink beer, talk about Jesus, talk about religion, theology, stuff like that. We host several book clubs. We host activities and different things for people to do, and that's basically all we're trying to do is move over, continue what we're doing, our crowd doesn't get rowdy, never has. Honestly, I don't wanna be there till 2:00 AM, 'cause I'll be behind the bar. I'm not trying to do that, that's like ten, I'm trying to be home so I can eat dinner and maybe watch TV, and then do it all over again, which is what I've been doing for the past seven years. Basically it. We just want somewhere fun to do, I mean, I live a block away, I wanna go there and hang out as well, as a patriot.
So, can I ask?
Hold that thought, Mike, do you wanna get into anything that, on what Angel just testified to?
Just again, I'm not talking about what they do or what they plan to do, but what could be, and that's what should be considered in any zoning request and everything. I did have something else I was gonna say, oh, I mean, again, conditions can be put on, they can put the conditions on themselves. I mean, Tanner said that at the planning board meeting, they can put conditions on themselves. The planning board could have recommended with conditions, the board of commissioners can recommend the conditions. All sorts of things like, you know, where the facility would be located in the building, it doesn't have to be approved for the whole building, you know, what hours they operate, et cetera, et cetera. But if nothing is done, then it will be wide open from here to eternity. So, I mean, that's all there is.
A lot of the things he's stated, those that he's had a problem with, is his own space, whether it be parking, somebody walking behind his business, that is completely irrelevant to it there wasn't a bar across the street in our place. It's a cocktail lounge, first off, but it has nothing, he's had those problems without us being there. So, like, those are things that we don't really see us having a negative effect on. We're looking more towards bringing commerce to downtown, trying to help Benson grow, bringing people down there to spend their money, have their time, and, you know, be able to enjoy being in our town. That's what we're looking for. So that was my biggest cross-examination of what he was discussing, if he made it like, people are trespassing on my property, you know, I'm not supposed to be parked down there past eleven, but I do. Those are things that I heard, and I was like, that has nothing to do with what we're trying to accomplish. So that's my cross-examination, other than that, I'm at the mercy of you guys.
I'd like to ask one question.
Mike's gotta turn coming though. Until they're all done, they, they get to keep putting on evidence.
Keep going, you know, back and forth over the whole thing. Again, you know, yes, I've had those problems, and that makes me aware of that, there could be increased problems. Again, I haven't attributed those problems to them, I'm just saying there's the potential for more, and, you know, I don't want to come across as I'm completely opposing what they wanna do, you know. If it had had certain conditions already established or whatever, you probably wouldn't find me up here, because it's not something I particularly relish. You know, certainly don't want people to be mad at me, you know, but sometimes you gotta stand up.
Gentlemen, Ms. Ollie, you had, I'm sorry for interrupting you.
That's okay, I have a question for Angel. So you've been there seven years. Do you frequently have to call the police or anybody down there?
Not one.
And I wanted to say too, I have been, I've come through Main Street at night, and it is bad downtown. I mean, even with your business going on, you never see people, I don't even see people outside standing, bawdering and going on. So I, I, I can't see the relevance of this. If you've got rules and that you're gonna put in place, then I don't understand what this is all about.
May I respond to that?
Absolutely, Mike.
Okay. That's their rules. But again, once somebody else comes in, they won't have to follow those rules, and it could be a problem. And the board is the one that's supposed to be responsible for making sure things are good. It's really not their responsibility unless they do something that goes outside rules that have been placed on the laws and other things.
I got a question for Tanner. So, special use permit, in the past, we've been told that we use special use permits, got sunset zone. For six months, that special use permit, and nothing occupies it, the special use permit goes away. Is that the case?
The special use permit would go away if another, if there was a change of use.
Right. So it's not forever? If it changed, if Mr. Reed sold a business, cocktail lounge went out of there, retail store went in there, so you use permits gone away?
Yes.
And that was my question a while ago, special use permits are for special use, and if they decide in a year to turn it into a strip joint, then they would have to come and get another special use permit, and the other one would go down. So, I, I don't.
I don't know that it'd be zoned for that.
Don't think we're gonna have to worry about that.
Lots of approvals, but.
You guys aren't planning that, right?
We had a railroad street, a gentleman's club to come to this board, and wanted to put a gentleman's club in, and their hours were to start at twelve o'clock at night and run to four o'clock in the morning.
I remember.
You remember that?
We had that request.
Uh huh, we had that request, and I said, what do y'all do? Well, you can bring your own alcohol, and I said, a gentleman's club, so what are you gonna do? Oh, men come and sit around and drink and talk. Yeah. Three o'clock in the morning.
Mr. Dart?
They wanted a special use permit, and that's why I wanna just make sure that we understand a special use permit is for a special use, and when it's dissolved for something else, it can't go into something else, it has to come back to, to this board, whoever it is.
Yeah. But if it goes from bar to bar, you know, again, listen, you know, what they plan, you know, if it goes as is, I'm perfectly happy with and everything. I'd like it to be successful, actually, I'd like it to be so successful they actually expand beyond the bar. Angel and I talked about this, and he said, you know, food might be a possibility and things. You know, I'd love for us to have, you know, another restaurant, you know, serving alcohol too, you know, on Main Street and everything. All I'm saying is, again, the request as is places no limitations, and therefore, you know, if something, you know, happens to either one of them, and, you know, then anybody can come in and do whatever they want within, you know, the approval that this board gives to this application. That's all I have to say. Unless somebody feels they have to ask me more questions.
Mike, that's all your evidence?
That's it.
Anything else submit, any more witnesses? Anybody else wanna come and speak in opposition or at all?
Obviously, nobody wants to take the stand with me, so.
If the board want, now, at this point, I would say a couple things, there's some housekeeping measures. Number one, before you get into deliberation, I don't believe we ever got a motion to enter the staff report and board packet and materials into the record, so you need to do that. Number two, at this point, before you get into deliberation, I know in, in times past, with different chairpersons looking after the meeting, there was, you observed more of a hard and fast rule about coming back and asking questions of parties or witnesses. That's completely up to you. We do, obviously, have to adhere to a certain process, and there's legalities that have to be observed with due process, but if you want, what I would suggest, though, to keep this moving along and ultimately to a conclusion, if you have more questions for anybody that is presented, or anybody else, or you need more information, Mr. O'Quinn or anybody else, then go ahead and ask those questions, get that information, get into whatever else you need to get into, and then close the fact-finding portion of this hearing, and move into a deliberation where you just talk amongst yourselves about the findings of fact. So two things there to consider right now.
So we asked me to go ahead and enter the staff report and the board record?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
I make a motion that we enter the staff report in the board record.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye. Those were proposed.
So is there any more information the board needs, feels like they need, again, keeping things back, re-centering now to the findings of fact, to the requirements of approval or denial of a, of a special use permit for this particular application? Is there any more information that any board member feels like they need?
I have a question for Tanner, that just came up.
Sir?
Mr. Sanchez testified that he had been operating and serving wine and beer out of his current address on Main Street for the past seven years. Was a special use permit required and granted for him to be able to do that in that building?
His general land use category is not a drinking establishment.
Okay, alright, so there was no special use permit required, so he's just been operating under his own rules since then?
Presumably through the ABC Commission rules, but not for our local zoning ordinance.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I got a question for Tanner.
Sir?
Special use permit, and it's not mine. Do you have to do the whole property, or you can specify?
You can specify. The application came into our office for 116 East Main Street.
Is there any more discussion? Alright, we're gonna close the finding of fact portion, and I make a motion, that I entertain a motion to either approve or deny the request for a special use permit.
If there's any more discussion, now's the time to have that too.
I'll just say that, y'all know me, I'm one of the young kids here, so, but I would just say that I think every board in, in history, if you go to downtown Wilmington or Charleston or any of the places that my wife and I like to go, sat in front of a board at some point in time asking this exact question to be the first one. And I think a bar on Main Street is inevitable, I hope it comes. And I wanna, I wanna partake when it's there, because if not, then we might as well fold this town up and just be done, because that's what young people want. We are fifteen miles from a college, we have people that are investing in buildings and putting apartments above them, myself included in that statement, with the hope that one day when I retire, that I'm standing on the other side of this and asking you to allow me to put a bar in the corner of my building at Main Street and Railroad. I've been at Main Street and Railroad since 2016. I was told that Railroad Street belonged to the dentist, and I wasn't allowed to park there when I got there. And I will say now that me and JP and probably the dentist have the most employees on Railroad Street. And at three o'clock on a Thursday, my office is done. We close at twelve on Friday, so we're definitely done early on Fridays, and the dentist closed, is closed on Fridays. And if this is gonna be a weekend establishment, which I think it will mostly be, considering the time that I've seen downtown dead during the middle week, as Ms. Maxine said, then I don't see how parking is an issue. And I think us as a board and town and patrons of this town have to realize that when you go to Wilmington, or to Raleigh, or to Charleston, Charleston, or anywhere that has a nightlife better than what we have, which is any nightlife, you don't get to park and walk ten foot to your destination. And we have provided parking, we have a parking lot across from Melon and Dorment that this town pays for. I would love to see us try, and I've talked to this before, about getting into an agreement with the one that Diane Davis, Ms. Davis leases for the ice cream shop to make that town public parking as well. But I think this is, this is gonna be a defining point, and I do think that we have had alcohol on Main Street before. There was an Italian restaurant that me and my wife used to eat there, and we would go get it, we would go drink wine, and we would eat supper there during lunch and supper, because I partake in both meals. And so, and we would go there, and I don't know of any instant of any time that we've ever had any police action at an establishment that was classy. And I don't think that you can put these type of establishments, as well as the brewery that I know has, and I assume that I've never heard of, has ever had an issue there, in the same category with the other bars that have been in this town. And so, I, I, I am one hundred percent in favor for this, because I hope this does break that threshold so that one day maybe I can be here and be a follower. And so, but that is, that is my opinion, I don't know where y'all stand on it or not. I do think that Gilbert Street needs to stay open, I do agree with him. I was at 114, which is the adjacent property, for about three years as a tenant. I now manage both of those ten- I now manage both of those tenants at one twelve and fourteen, right across from Gilbert Alley, at both of those buildings. Um, they do need to be marked for parking, but I also recall the board, prior to me being here, giving me the permission to close that alley from time to time to have parties, to bring in concert, to bring in music at night, when it didn't affect business owners. And I felt like that was a success, and I never had any complaints about it. And so, I think this town is ready for growth, I think the question tonight is not as much about the bar, or the future of the bar, or when the bar's coming, it's gonna be about whether the rest of you as board members are ready to see it.
One, one admonition while you're considering what Mr. Neighbors just spoke upon. I, you're always gonna hear a fair amount in these proceedings of opinion. But remember to focus back upon the guiding principle that the law requires you to apply competent, relevant, substantial evidence in the record, factual basis and foundation for approval based on the findings of fact required by the UDO. So, you heard a lot of opinion from both sides, that's my opinion, and I'm not sworn in, so everybody could disagree with that statement, but that's, you know, your attorney's opinion and advice to you. Um, that's, that's, that's fine, but you really can't put a lot of legal weight into that and use that to make the determination of approval or denial. But you also did hear factual, uh, competent and material evidence about parking and what's gonna be done, when, concrete facts, uh, that were testified to. Now, whether you discount or put more weight in one or another, that's, that's what you're here to do tonight, than you sit as, as like a panel of judges and, and weigh it out. But just try to remember, I mean, as you deliberate, to focus on the factual statements, not so much the opinion that you heard.
And I'll follow up one other statement if I may, Mayor Protem, it's just the fact that any time you approve something like this, you're approving it subject to the person that you're approving it to, because it's all in their hands. They, they could absolutely put a honky-tonk in there if they wanted to. And I think at some point in time, you've got to put some judgment of character and history on the people that are asking for permission, and just hope that they've got the best interest in mind. So, I'm ready to make the motion.
And I'm ready to.
I would, I would strongly suggest you go through each finding of fact, and, and, um, I would cite two specific, some specific, um, reasoning at least, uh, from evidence provided tonight to each one as best you're, as best you're able. That's just a suggestion.
And Commissioner Neighbors?
Yes, ma'am.
I wanna make this motion, but I cannot read it.
Fair enough.
I cannot see it.
I'm gonna look at finding of fact, number one, with your permission, Ms. Mayor Protem, and say that I make the motion that we approve a special use permit, twenty twenty-five dash oh seven, for one sixteen East Main Street, to allow a drink establishment on the property at one sixteen Main Street, and that it meets the first finding of fact, uh, that the applicant will not materially endanger the public health or safety located where proposed and developed according to the plans submitted and approved. I will back that up as Mr. Ike, as, uh, Mr. Ike asked me to, by saying that a similar establishment has been owned and operated by this person for the past seven years, it has never come up to material or danger the public or safety of the public.
Senator. Go ahead with that one.
I tell you, do one at a time, he said.
Uh, if you wanna take them all at once, uh, you have that down in the minutes, right? Unless there's more discussion, you wanna vote one by one, um, you can do it, it's up to you. I would go through them in list form like you're doing, if you don't wanna vote on each one, that's, that's totally up to y'all.
We can just make one vote?
You can make one vote at the end, it's gonna be a very long motion.
Yeah. I will, uh, I will, uh, I will amend to include in that motion that the application meets all required specifications and conforms to the standards and practices of sound land use planning in the town code of ordinance or other applicable regulations. I will back that up, because they did go through the proper planning channels and submitted application through the planning, which has now been unanimously approved by our planning board, and I am recommending approval as well. Include in that motion that the application will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, and will not be detrimental to the use or deli, or adjacent properties or other neighborhood uses. Uh, back that up, because we are not making any structural or amending changes that have been submitted to this board, and it will just be operating out of the property as it currently sits. I will include in that motion that the application will not adversely affect the adopted plans and policies to the town or violate the character of existing standards for development of the adjacent properties. As again stated in the earlier statement, they have been in, uh, in a, you know, they're building a block, two blocks down the street, uh, for the past seven years, and I have not witnessed any of that. So that will conclude my motion for approval of S U B twenty twenty-five dash zero seven.
I hear a motion to approve, um, the findings of fact, and actually, the, um, the criteria that was presented, all in favor say, nope. You got that, um, oh, you hit it. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those who oppose? Okay. Alright, so now we're gonna move down to T X T oh one dash two zero two five, Tanner?
Alright, a collective sigh of relief, because that is it for our quasi-judicial hearings. We are now in for a legislative hearing decision. This final item I have for your consideration tonight is text amendment proposal one. This proposal would change the permitted, uh, use matrix of our ordinance to allow places of worship in the B one central business zoning district. In terms of a physical change to the document, uh, we would place a P for permitted in the use matrix under the B one zoning column, as you can see on this slide here. For your consideration, staff has compiled information from federal acts, case law, the North Carolina School of Government, and nearby jurisdictions. First and foremost, the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act, also known as R. Louispa, is a two-part federal rule that dictates zoning and landmaking regulation, that it can't impose a substantial burden on religious exercise. R. Louispa also imposes that zoning regulation cannot discriminate secular versus non-secular uses of similar intensity in any given zoning district, discriminate based on denomination, totally exclude from a jurisdiction, or unreasonably limit religious assemblages. Some considerations from the North Carolina School of Government include to use objective standards that apply equally to comparable uses, creating reasonable alternatives, and that any discretionary permit standards have solid land use justification for the decision. This chart shows which districts nearby allow churches in their most similar district to B one central, um, central business district. Those jurisdictions that allow churches in their similar district include Harnett County, Lee County, Dunn, and Smithfield. Coates and Clayton do not allow them in a similar district, and Fuquay Varina, uh, does allow them with a special use permit. Uh, this slide provides some details on case law examples, including Lighthouse versus Long Branch, which argued that the zoning ordinance for the downtown commercial district permitted a variety of uses similar to churches, but did not permit churches. The courts upheld that the regulation treats the religious assembly on less than equal terms and failed the R. Louispa challenge. In the case of Mid Rash versus Surfside, private clubs and similar uses were allowed where synagogues were not. And the courts also found that this violated the equal terms provision and failed the R. Louispa challenge. This slide includes all of the permitted uses in the B one, uh, central business district, assembly or otherwise, including museums, libraries, offices, and indoor recreation. At their last regularly scheduled meeting, the planning board voted unanimously to recommend denial of the text amendment to the Board of Commissioners. Any questions?
I, could you explain it just a little bit, I mean?
Which part?
So, this is something that we did not have in place prior to now.
No, right now, we have in, our land use, our UDO does not allow the use of churches in our B one main downtown district. This has been in place since before I came on the board eight years ago. Um, we have been, received a request at this point in time to change that text amendment and redo our land use chart that was passed years ago, to now allow churches in our business B one district, downtown district.
Okay, I guess my question is, is that ba, is that basically saying if a church wants to come to Main Street, we can now allow it?
Anywhere on, that's B one, I don't think all of Main Street's B one, but a lot of it around there is.
If we were to change it, that is correct. Right now, it's not allowed.
Right, that's, okay, I just wanted you to clarify that.
The, um, top table here is the current permitted use matrix for places of worship, and this proposal would change it to the, uh, to the bottom there. As you can see, right now, it's only permitted in, in two zoning districts, uh, with the exception of a special use permit in another, and this would add it to, uh, one more zoning district.
Can I make one request, and it's not even related to the text amendment? Great chart, horrible colors, is there any way we could go to black and white or something?
Yeah, sure, sure.
That's really hard for me to read.
Sure. This has just been the standard formatting on, on it, so, yeah, I agree.
You still have orange.
That's why I have this screen right here, so I can put it right here, so I can read it. But, sorry, it just led me to get off track. Now we would open up for those in favor, or I guess.
So, at this part.
One other thing while you're here, back, um, back when, when this came up and the, uh, the facility was, uh, for all the buildings over there was owned by Mr. J. Wilson, and, uh, uh, J. E. had, uh, passed away, and his estate, uh, said, well, the owners of the building, because we have discussed this area, it ain't just started in the last six months, it's been in the last three or four years that we have had problems in parking out here. But, they brought, from what I understand, the reason that they were there anyway is because Mr. Wilson was, uh, was, the, the electricity, whatever, was in his name, is that right, Ike?
If, if, if I could, um, this text amendment does not consider any particular one place. Um, this would just be a, a universal change for B one to allow, um, religious institutions.
Right.
This is a global change.
Yeah, this, this is not an approval, uh, yeah.
It's about one parcel, this is about every parcel.
It's about all the, the, the parcels.
It's about every parcel downtown that's currently in B one.
Okay, okay.
So this is, if you change this tonight, then I can put a church in my building tomorrow. Right, so that, or any other B one parcel that is downtown.
I thought as, as five or six years ago, that this board, not this board, but the board that we were sitting on at that time, had said that a church moved out, there would not be a church put in.
And that was eight to ten years ago, because that was.
And it would absolutely kill the downtown area, as far as everything went, and then, but we're, we're looking at it across the board.
That's right, we've been, we've received a request to amend it, to change that decision that was made ten years ago.
Yeah.
Beyond that, I don't know when the original zone B one.
At least before I got involved, ten years ago.
It's been on B one for, longer than anybody here is probably worth it.
So, that is the, the request at hand, but it's not individual, it's, it's talking about the whole downtown B one district.
Okay.
So, we're revising the same thing that you revisited, I guess, last time you were here.
Yeah, any party can seek an application for a text amendment. So, the applicant's asked for something, but you can't look at it in the light of anything to do with the applicant, you're just asking, you have to look at it in light of, is this what's best for the overall?
Okay. Alright.
Oh, there's a, Tanner gives a side of it, and I give it to.
I needed to understand it. Read it, read it, and didn't pick it up.
Okay, so is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor of this, um, change? Okay, is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition?
Name it, state your name. Hi, Paul Boucher, I live at three oh two North Road Street, Benson. My opposition, I, again, sit as the chair of the, uh, Elevate Benson Downtown Economic Development Board. I wanna read you a statement, first off. Um, when you're revitalizing a downtown district, the goal is to locate light use together, to build foot traffic. Therefore, first floor primary streets should use retail and restaurant use. Upper floors should be used for office space, um, with, uh, that doesn't require a lot of foot traffic or residential. Um, this statement came from Liz Parham, she's the director for North Carolina Main Street. Um, the, uh, they are pretty much the chief organization, um, they're a leading organization regarding revitalization of downtowns. The town of Benson, uh, has been a member of this organization since two thousand and eight. Dunn actually recently became a member of this organization in two thousand and twenty. It's the sixth oldest Main Street organization in the nation, they're celebrating forty-five years. It's the largest Main Street conference in the country. Um, and, uh, I was given the opportunity by your board to actually go there two years ago. I addressed y'all afterwards, um, at the, uh, for, um, the, uh, conference in Goldsboro. I've since been to the conference this past year in Morseville on my own, but I went again with town staff. Um, they, uh, I do sit as the board chair for Elevate Benson, and, um, we are an extremely diversified group, um, that, of business owners that have a, a common goal to, um, uh, increase, um, vitality and the well-being for just downtown in general. Um, collectively, we've got hundred years of, hundreds of years of experience as, um, downtown business owners. Um, we meet monthly to discuss, uh, ways to improve and generate more business to our downtown area, including driving foot traffic. Um, we've got, um, um, a number of po, positive articles that have been written about us in the last, uh, year and a half, um, as well as we pull money together out of our own businesses to be able to produce marketing material, um, some of which I've brought and distributed to you all on different occasions. And, um, our organization, North, North Carolina Main Street Organization, encourages churches in the primary B one district. Uh, we understand that places of worship are very important to a community, and even as recently as two years ago, when I was at the Goldsboro, North Carolina Main Street Conference, they did utilize, um, fellowship halls of a couple of churches that were within the area of downtown. But literally, they were blocks away from their core downtown business district, and we walked there and utilized those spaces for breakout sessions. The major issues that, that they cite is, um, the large amount of parking that is, uh, needed for a concentrated period of time for, uh, an assembly of that size. Uh, can also be unsafe just to the, um, the, the overwhelming amount of parking and, um, the limited sight lines, and also the speed of, you know, related to that with the other vehicles. Uh, the lack of parking can also be negatively impacted by the other businesses that are trying to operate in the area, um, creating a shortage. The building constraints, the older buildings have not been upfit to accommodate, um, accomod, uh, the occupancy load. Uh, this is unsafe for the members and the visitors attending, uh, these places of worship in and of itself. And although the storefront churches create foot traffic, uh, it's been cited that this, um, um, does not translate directly into economic benefit to the nearby businesses, um, because they typically do not, uh, frequent, um, patronize these businesses. Um, last, it's important to note that storefront churches in a downtown business district, um, suggest ins, um, financial instability to your community. Uh, it also shows that you have a lack of resources in your community. If you use downtown, their, their thought process on that is that if you're actually using downtown business, that, um, downtown buildings for church organizations, that you don't have the appropriate facilities in your community, and it, it shows on a negative light. That's pretty much all I have to offer, but I just wanted to tell you, I appreciate all of your assistance in helping us with these many things.
Thanks, Paul. Thank you. Is there any more discussion?
My, hi there. My name's Deborah Davis with Sisters Two Ice Cream and P O Box twenty-four Benson, North Carolina is my address. I don't have a, I don't have a problem with churches. I don't have a problem with that church. The only problem I have is the parking. Even though I did have to lease the parking lot at the end of the building, it is the only spot that is available for parking, and if the, the gentleman that is at the end of the building, if he is gonna have any kind of establishment there, he is gonna need parking also. And that, it will not be available unless I split it with him. The other thing is, is there's a lot of cars out there, and there's a lot of people there on Market Street. They do not contribute at all to the commerce of Market Street or Main Street. And they just go where they're, where, where they into their building, and then they, they stay until well after eleven o'clock. We've seen this when we come home, or come back from an, an event. And I hope that, I know you guys have seen pictures of all the cars that we used to have out there. And I wanted to know if you guys had any, had any questions for me. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
I'm Loretta Bird. I'm the president, C E O of the Benson Chamber, and Chamber's address is one two two East Main Street. I live at four two seven Green Leaf Road, Anger, which is in Johnston County. It's McGee's Crossroads. I just want to say a few things. You have what I told the planning board in your notes. I hope you had an opportunity to read it. And I'm a very, very strong believer, and I deeply, deeply respect the role of faith-based organizations in our community. But I want to urge y'all to carefully consider the significant implications of permitting churches to establish themselves in our downtown business core. This decision could have far more reaching consequences for the economic health and civic character of our town center. Our downtown business district is the economic engine of Benson. It specifically is owned to foster commerce, attract diverse businesses, and generate tax revenue that supports our public services. Every storefront occupied by a retail shop, a restaurant, or a service provider contributes directly to our local economy through sales, property taxes, and job creation. When a property is occupied by a nonprofit entity, such as a church, it typically becomes exempt from property taxes. The loss of tax revenue multiplied across several properties can significantly strain our town's budget and reduce our capacity to fund essential services and infrastructure. Furthermore, the operational nature of churches, as Paul mentioned, uh, they have, they are usually meet on the weekends. And with the traffic on the weekends, our business establishments would not have parking. I want to also, uh, tell, say to you that, um, I was, I remember when the rule was changed. I guess I'm the oldest one in here of the room. When the town board changed that rule, uh, years, it was probably fifteen plus years ago. It might have been twenty years ago. I want to ask that you uphold the existing zoning regulations that protect our downtown business district for its intended commercial purpose. Let us continue to encourage the growth of business districts that contribute to our tax base, create jobs, foster a dynamic, inclusive environment for all. There are ample suitable locations outside the core, which is Main, I think the core is Church Street over to Parish Drive. Outside that area, where churches can flourish without impacting the economic vitality and civic neutrality of our downtown. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Any further discussion?
I would say with nobody here to speak in favor of the change, and the fact that I believe that people here twenty years ago were probably a lot wiser and smarter than I was, I don't see any need to change what might have been in place for several years at this point in time.
Okay, you need a motion, just like the one.
I, I make a motion to deny the request for take the minutes of text twenty twenty-five, that's zero one, change the U D O permitted use ma- matrix to allow places of worship.
Next, under, um, old business, we're going to consider approval of the memo of understanding regional water systems.
Do we need to table?
I think, yeah, we do, because I don't.
Yeah, we discussed, um, they discussed that, the work session, but.
There was no action, and that's why we brought it back under old business.
I would, uh, since this is something that Mayor Rayner is involved in discussions with, I would make the motion that we table this into our meeting on August.
So August the, uh, August twelfth is your next worst.
I'd say the August twelfth meeting, at which time we can further that discussion, if it pleases the board.
All right, would you consider it? Would you make a motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, those who oppose. Okay, next, um, let's see, under new business, we're going to consider approval of the advisory board appointments. Angie Thornton.
Yeah, okay, um, we, um, we opened up the cultural arts advisory board, and I did receive an application. It's for a county seat. Um, so I just need a motion to approve, to appoint Mr. William Johnson.
Will this complete the board, or is there still vacancies?
No, this only makes the third.
Okay.
This is only makes the third one that we've had.
I make the motion that we approve Mr. Johnson's application as submitted and appoint him to the cultural arts board.
All in favor? Those who oppose?
All right, thank y'all.
All right, thank you, Angie. Next, uh, is to consider approval of the, um, memo of understanding, the M O U with, uh, Magnera Corporation, Jay Mary and Ike.
Who you wanna, I've talked more to Jay. You want to hear from him something?
You know a lot more about this than me. This is talking about where we might be able to put, uh, the new water towers, so.
Basically, that's, basically, that's what it is. We've, uh, entered into a memo of understanding with Magnera Corporation. I've been working with them, Mr. Robert Weesminster. Robert, if you're watching, I apologize for butchering your last name. It is for, it's right off Market Street. It used to be the old softball field out there at Berry Global. That's where we're considering putting a seven hundred fifty thousand gallon, uh, new water tank. Uh, there are, they are, they approve of the idea. They're, actually, they're very excited to have us in here. We've gone back and forth several times with the memo of understanding for maintenance of the tower, the acquisition of the property, either through uh, tax gift or the town will purchase it outright. Uh, the last time I talked to Mr., last time I talked to Robert was, and he was agreeable to this very latest addition of the understanding, and he said we sign off on it, and we proceed, proceed with our next steps, either for a real estate appraisal or surveying for the, the tank itself.
So, so reading through this, this looks like we're entering into either a tax exemption or a lot kind of, or a, a transfer for a tax exemption.
That's, that's the hope.
That's the hope.
Right, that's the.
And it looks like we're paying to place their logo on the tower at our expense the first time, and then we will maintain it with our regular maintenance schedule. And, and other than that, if they change their logo or name, then it's on them.
Yes.
I wrote it with, that someone else could understand it, because that's exactly what it's just to say, yeah.
And I've asked you four, and I'm gonna ask it again, because I've never seen two water towers that close together. Is this the best location?
According to Ray Adams of our water department, this is the ideal location. We have a sixteen inch main running up Market Street right now, and this will also help servicing expansion or anything on the east side of nine 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 five.
Did we not have an engineering firm employed at some point in time to do a water study for the location of this?
Well, I heard some stuff about the engineering firm.
We did, and there was two sites. The other site, um, was by, closer to the public work building, and realistically, it even to the engineering firm wasn't as suitable as the site due to the, uh, elevation differences. Again, the biggest kicker for us right now, and as Jay alluded to, the all municipalities up and down, as we've had in those discussions, we're moving east of ninety-five, right? With Sixty right there, with the Crosspoint Building, everything we need to push east of ninety-five. The location of this tower is the prime location for what we need right now. We are currently, um, we're thankful because we have the South Johnson Tower pushing in from the north for that part of our town. And there's not a lot of location there for large industry or large users to come in. The area we do have that possibility is the east side, so we do really want to capitalize on that to be able to run it under ninety-five.
Just ask quick, I've never seen two water towers that.
Yeah, they are fair, they're fairly close, but.
Dean, I did see some of the plans, though. And without the other water tank, this one that they were looking at, and the engineers had drawn up, this is the cheapest way to go.
Oh, I know it's the cheapest way.
Uh, we can, we can take care of what water is running by and tie it in and feed it to where we need to.
Yeah, I, I, you know.
Yeah. As long as y'all are confident you're right. I make, I make, I make a motion we approve.
And there's no, I was just, I mean.
It's just the M O U.
Yeah, it's an M O U. It's not anything, this is not a done deal. There's a lot more has to be done.
All right, those in favor, say aye. Aye, those who oppose? Okay, we're moving, um, down to the next, under C, new town manager search. Um, we'll have a presentation of Lee Worsley with Central Pines Regional Council.
He said, he said, I've spent enough time. You know, I've been charging us for hours tonight.
We appreciate, we appreciate you sitting throughout the whole meeting.
We could put you at the first, but we thought you wanted to hear all this other.
Well, absolutely. It takes me back to being a manager. All right. Well, good evening, uh, Madam Mayor Pro Tem and members of the board. Um, my name's Lee Worsley. I'm the executive director of the Central Pines Regional Council. Um, we are the council governments that serve the seven counties that include Johnston County. We serve fifty local governments, including Benson. And we're very pleased to be here tonight to talk to you about your manager search. And I, I'm gonna apologize ahead. This will probably be, in terms of me engaging you, one of the longer conversations we're gonna need to have because this will tee us up basically for the entire process. Um, but hopefully, we've organized things that we can be as expeditious as, as possible. I do want to introduce, um, Elena Keegan. Um, Elena is gonna be helping us with this, um, process. Elena is our local government services director and does a wonderful job helping me and, um, working with our fifty local governments and all the great things that, uh, that our staff does. So I appreciate Elena being here, um, taking notes. Thank you to Ike and to Steve and others for helping us, uh, get this far. Um, the goal tonight, um, just to refer back to the memo that, um, sort of was on top of all the information that we sent to you. Um, we want to nail down the recruitment schedule, uh, to get some dates. Go ahead and get dates on the calendar so that everybody knows, uh, when you're gonna need to be committed, uh, for different phases of the process. Go through a matrix of, um, where you all want to be when we advertise on salary and benefits and all of that, because that obviously is gonna be key in the recruitment process and making sure you get the best candidates possible. Really important thing is to go over the candidate profile. What is the board looking for in your next manager? And so we'll spend a little bit of time on that. Talk a little bit about, um, if there are any specific places you want us to advertise in addition to what we've suggested. And, uh, probably very briefly, and if we really have to, we might be able to kick this to a later date, talk about your preferences for background search. So with that, um, if you don't mind, uh, in the packet, um, the first, uh, attachment is the detailed schedule. So it should be on the Central Pines and Benson letterhead. It says town manager search, detailed schedule. And the goal tonight is to sort of run through that schedule and to, um, agree to some dates and times. And so what you'll see on the schedule is really each, um, each point in the search and what we will owe to you as a board, um, to get you ready for that piece of the search, and then how we're gonna follow up with you, um, after that meeting or, or the interviews, or whatever that case may be. So, um, you're already almost done with page one, so, uh, we're already doing well. We're on the July seventeenth board meeting. I won't, um, go through that. We've talked already about what we hope to, um, get to you. Uh, we will, um, follow up this meeting, um, with everything completed based on your agreement tonight, so that you know exactly where you are in the process. We're proposing, um, that around the fifth of August, that we send you prep material for your August twelfth, um, board meeting. We would propose to be back on the twelfth, um, with a job ad and with an evaluation matrix. That will be how you will rate candidates in the interview process. And we will develop that job ad based on what we talk about tonight, job, uh, candidate profile, salary and benefits. So, um, is August the twelfth okay for us to return for that?
Sure. I think it's, um, it's our work session, right? Yeah, so we should, we should have time.
Very good. So we will, um, hope that we get everything nice, and you may have some changes to the brochure. Uh, we will, um, make those changes and get those back out to you in a couple days. And if we, you and we feel like we need to come back again, um, on the twenty-first, um, we can certainly do that. So we'll sort of hold that date, um, if, if we need to come back, and, and we can decide that on the twelfth. Hopefully, if everything goes well, y'all will give us a thumbs up on the twelfth, and we may even begin to start advertising earlier than the twenty-seventh. So right now, so if you go down to phase two, we're gonna assume, let's just assume we have to come back on the twenty-first. We'd have everything wrapped up, and we'd start advertising on August twenty-seventh. If we can get everything done on the twelfth, we'll probably be able to advertise maybe by the twenty-first. Okay? So, phase one, everybody good? So, so phase one is sort of the prep phase, getting ready to advertise. All right, phase two, um, we will begin advertising the position no later than the twenty-seventh of August. We'll go over where we're advertising in a few minutes, uh, so we're just looking at dates right now. But we'll, we'll advertise it widely. Hopefully, we'll get a lot of applicants. Um, we will, uh, begin, um, reviewing those applicants. So the way we do this is based on that candidate profile, we will review applicants and rank them for you. But again, ultimately, it's the board's decision on who you interview. Uh, but we help you through that process of creating a matrix on candidate A, B, C, D, and how they stack up against the candidate profile. We will also provide you everything. So even if a candidate doesn't meet anything, we will send those resumes on to you. You will have a full packet of every person that applies. We believe in full transparency and making sure that you have everything. Alright, so, we want to give a month or so for applications, uh, so our, our target is about a week before your Oc- October fourteenth board meeting. We will have to you a ranking of candidates, and at this point, we will be sending you things confidentially through your attorney because the name of candidates are protected, and so, we can talk about that more. Um, but we will be talking to candidates, and it's really important that their names are confidential. There, there are many of them, most of them are applying from somewhere and probably don't want their boards to know yet that they're applying for jobs. Um, so, the fourteenth, um, I haven't checked with the attorney, but I'm assuming we will go into closed session to review candidates, individual candidates, and you all at that time will pick, um, up to five candidates that you want to, um, interview. So, is Oc- October fourteenth sound good for that review?
That will be closed session October the fourteenth.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, 'cause you'll be talking about specific people.
Yep. Alright, so as soon as we get done with that meeting, we'll begin reaching out to those candidates, um, and inviting them, um, to the first round. Um, we would strongly, well, we can talk about this more, um, but we would, uh, suggest that if you're bringing people in, let's bring them in and not do virtual interviews, um, for a position like this, uh, we can talk more about that in, in a little bit. I think that the first date, so if you go to phase three in the timeline, the first date that we do not have nailed down that we want to talk to you about is when you would like to actually do the interviews. And so, that is a significant commitment of time, um, and you may not interview five, you don't have to interview five. If you decide you just want to interview three or four, you know, that's up to you all, but look, you know, we ought to plan for at least five. If you think an hour, hour and fifteen minutes for every interview, some breaks in between, it's, it's close to a full day of commitment. And so, to stay on track, we need to be scheduling those interviews late October, very early November. So, Mr. Manager, Mr. Attorney, I don't know how you all want to do this in terms of scheduling, I mean, we can try to find a date today, we can work on it after the meeting. I know how it gets when people start pulling their calendars out, so, or if you have a suggested date that aligns with something, we'll, we can work with your schedule.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, ma'am.
In the past, I guess to accommodate the board, most of our interviewing was done on like a Saturday, is that possible?
We can work on your schedule.
What do y'all, what do y'all think?
When, when, when did you do your interview?
On Saturday.
On Saturday, and it was, it's been, 'cause I was, his suggestion was like possibly five, and I'm thinking, unless it's like during the day, through the week, some of us may be working.
It could be for, for choice, yes.
That's right.
It could be done on a Saturday.
How, how much notice do you need to know this date, I mean, we, we don't know how many candidates we're gonna get, we're assuming they're gonna have five to review, but last time, we didn't have that many when we hired, we didn't have that many to interview, did we?
We had about four.
We had three or.
Three, three, four.
Three.
We, we did some of them out.
I think we went to three last time.
Yeah, and we interviewed, I think, three.
I think we started out with ten, and before we got to it.
Right.
So, that's why we're still letting them pull out themselves, right?
They pulled out and took other things.
I think if we plan for five and then you only interview three, then it's time back, right? But let's plan for the, the max and then we'll see where it goes. But sure, like Steve said, whatever, we'll accommodate your schedule, so if it's Saturday, if it's an evening, if you have to split it off into two days, I mean, we'll work with you. Whatever you think.
I think do it as early as you can in October, I, I mean, it'll be, it would, best case scenario, we could wrap this up prior to the election.
If, if I could, and, and, um, early, early like that, because you're gonna have some candidates that got, got applications out to several other places as well.
Sure.
Yeah, so, the sooner you get them in here and interviewed, the sooner you can make it soon.
No, you, no, that's, please. And, and we can, as, as candidates start emerging and as we're advertising, we can tell candidates, you need to reserve this date. Right, so if you all decide you want to do the twenty-fifth of October, I'm just throwing that out as a Saturday, we'll, we'll tell candidates as they apply, this is the date. Go ahead and mark it off in case you're invited.
I mean, if you're gonna do that, I'm good, October eighteenth or the twenty-fifth. As far as me being available. Just wondering which one you're from.
It don't, I'm, I'm, I got you one.
So far in advance, we probably, definitely have time to, none of our plans before then.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not good November first, though.
I'm good October the twenty-fifth.
And I am.
So, October twenty-fifth work?
I think we do October twenty-fifth.
I, I, you don't know that you'll necessarily need me, but October twenty-fifth, I will be in Tampa for the International City County Managers Association meeting. I'm a senior advisor and I will, I, I leave on Friday night.
Yeah, I'm, I don't think you'll need me either, but I could be there remotely, but I'll be in Nashville.
I don't know that you need me, I'm just saying, I, I, I'm already committed to go to the conference.
I think, I think we can handle this on the twenty-fifth, you can facilitate.
If, if, if you're manager and attorney, you're comfortable, I've.
Yeah, you, I mean, you, you're in closed session under A six for personnel, you don't need me there, it's not an attorney session. And I can be there remotely if there's some legal question that comes up.
Okay.
Mayor Rayner said he can do the twenty-fifth, but not the eighteenth, so.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think we go to the twenty-fifth. Either in, any of the Saturdays in October, I'm gonna have to take vacation, I just need to know early enough to be able to get it, so y'all just let me know which one y'all wanna do.
October twenty-fifth.
Alright.
Alright, October twenty-fifth, good, okay, thank you. So, during that, um, during that meeting, um, the goal, and again, you know, things can change, right? You may have a candidate that just blows everybody away, and you're like, this is the person, or you may say, we'd like to bring two back. Or you may decide, we don't want to do second round interviews, I'd recommend it, but let's go ahead and get things scheduled and, and then we'll figure that out as we, as we move forward. So, um, what I would suggest is that maybe in a couple of weeks, and if you're only gonna interview two, it doesn't necessarily have to be on a Saturday, but, uh, sometime in November, early November, we set aside sometime for potential second round final interviews with two candidates. So, three hours at most, two and a half hours maybe. Now, you, you're gonna want to spend a little time deliberating, right, about your preference, so, um, two and a half, three hours, probably you'll get it.
Do we have to wait two weeks, could, do we do it in the evening that next week, do you think that's too, too soon for the candidates or the potential? I'm just thinking that elections November the fourth, and, and of course, we won't change until December, so that won't matter to us. Right, so, so, it would be the old boys, do it until December, so never mind, just scratch my phone.
Okay, alright, no worries. Now, I think we could move pretty quickly, I think, you know, it's just, the key is communication with candidates, right? So that they, they're, we're clear with them, hey, if we ask you again, this is the night, be ready.
And we get it, when we get a little closer to the dates, like the twenty-fifth and then, uh, the dates in November, we will decide on what time, like nine o'clock start in the morning or ten o'clock, what, do you have a preference?
It, it, it's whatever the board, um, desires, um, I think the twenty-fifth, you're, you'll probably want to get going in the morning, nine-ish, nine-thirty.
I mean, you're talking two to three hour interviews or an hour interview?
No, I, I don't think you're gonna be more than an hour, um, you know, forty-five minutes or so, but you want to build in time to debrief the, on the candidate, take a little time for yourselves. So, it's, it's gonna be a day on the twenty-fifth, so I would say you're probably gonna be nine, nine-thirty to, um, four or five P M. probably.
Well, yeah, I mean, if we needed to do the second one, if we wanted to do an evening, what do y'all think about November the sixth, that's a Thursday, or if y'all need a Saturday, then November the eighth?
I'm good with November eighth, 'cause on, yeah, if y'all want a Saturday, I'm on eighth into twenty-second.
Or, if, like you said, if it's only gonna take a couple hours, how would y'all feel about coming on the sixth on the Thursday night and starting around seven o'clock and knocking out a couple? I'm too sure we won't have more than two.
I could probably do.
You won't have more than two.
I could do a Thursday night, I can't do November the first, which is Saturday.
Unless on a Thursday night?
Yes, ma'am.
So, maybe November sixth, let's, why don't we say, if it's okay, can we say six, just to give you six P M. or is that six-thirty?
How, 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 how much time do you need to get home at even?
I can get there.
By six?
Okay.
Why don't, why don't we do that, and then if we need to, if we need to make a decision after that, then our next meeting is November the eleventh, right?
Is it?
Yeah, November eleventh, yeah.
Yeah, Veterans Day.
That's Veterans Day.
Yeah, I, I've never brought that up, but I'm making my schedule earlier, I don't know if there's actually gonna be a board meeting on Veterans Day.
That's true.
We can call, special call meeting that makes a decision on it.
Yeah.
You can.
I mean, any, any day, right, it ain't gonna be that Tuesday.
Okay.
When we get to that point.
So, but we're all good with November sixth or potential, November sixth at six? For second round interviews?
Alright.
This could change.
So, the, the goal on the sixth will be for you all to interview your top two and to, um, hopefully on the sixth, and if we need to come back, we, we can work with you on a, on another date to do that, but would, to be, would be to pick your top candidate and basically to authorize whomever is going to make that offer and do those negotiations to do that. With the goal, um, because your manager appointment needs to take place, um, in open session, the goal would be on the twentieth of November that you all vote on your candidate and employment agreement, or vote to appoint. So, that, the sixth, that, that lines up really nicely, I think we can. Alright. Everybody good with the schedule, like I said, we, we've got this down, what you'll get is a revised schedule with all the dates filled in, so you'll have it. And we'll work with, um, your staff to make sure that everything's scheduled, um, one other, just logistical thing, um, my assumption, you'll want to do the interviews here, or is there another location you would want to do those interviews on that Saturday?
You doing them here in the conference room?
Yeah, probably here, or the downstairs conference room.
Okay.
That's where we did them before.
In this, in this location?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Alright, good.
In this building.
In this building, alright.
Yes, sir.
We can work through everything else. Alright, any questions on the schedule? Okay, alright, um, let's, I'll tell you what, let's, um, skip over the next attachment, which is that matrix, and let's go to the profile, which is the third. Um, let's get that done first and then we can go back to the, to the matrix. So, the profile, it says draft candidate profile based on previous recruitment advertisement. And so, the last time you recruited for a manager, you had a really nice brochure, and the board said, this is the type of person we want as a manager. We want them to have these qualities, this knowledge, this experience, and this is what you will, this is what we will rate candidates on when we get their resumes, do they meet these things? How many of these things do they meet, how well do they meet based on the paper that they submit to us? We will draft questions for interviews, um, that are related to this profile, so you're asking questions where you can get more information and get them to give you examples. And then ultimately, when you're rating your candidates, you're gonna rate them against, um, the profile so that you have a really nice tight process that you can justify and make a good decision on. So, we, we've literally copied and pasted this, and as a reminder, the, this is the board's decision on this profile. You may say, we want this to be exactly like it was, or your priorities may have changed, and, I mean, I'm not, you may say, community economic development isn't as important now as this, and we want to switch it up, or infrastructure. Now's the time to tell me if this meets your needs or if there are other things you want to put in here. If you don't have the right words, that's okay, we can help craft some things and put it in the brochure, but generally, is this profile still meet your needs, or do you want, um, some changes, do I need to go through it page by page, I know we sent it out before? Um, you let us know how we can help you get agreement on the profile. This is probably the most important piece of the conversation tonight because candidates are gonna look at the profile and say, hey, I meet that, or, eh, I don't meet it, I'm not gonna apply. So, again, it's in the attachments, the, the top says draft candidate profile based on previous recruitment advertisement. And it says the ideal candidate to be Benson's next town manager is an open-minded, personable and progressive individual, dot, dot, dot. So, what do y'all think?
I think it's pretty standard, I, I can tell you my personal thing, I, I would love to put more emphasis on the financial management and the, um, any experience in financial management and maybe some experience in, uh, project funding and, well, help me, help me word this with, uh, with the money that we're hopefully gonna still get if we don't screw that up. Grants.
So, is it hands-on grants management, is it finding grant opportunities? 'Cause I, I imagine you have staff that, or maybe you don't, that can manage the grants, are you looking for somebody that can look for opportunities and build relationships and put the pieces together to get grants?
Has, uh, Steve applied yet?
Well, no, sir, 'cause.
Somebody that's that experienced.
So, take his picture and put it in the brochure, okay.
This is true that, that has done the things that he has done, I know, I know we can't get a unicorn, uh, but.
You never will. Well, I would agree with that, I've known Steve a long time, but, um.
I locked him down for a decade today, I think.
You do?
Part-time decade.
Yeah. We can work, we can work around the salary, get retirement.
I, I think experience is gonna be, is gonna be key for us, I, I think we need, I mean, not personally, I think we need experienced managers, somebody who's been a manager in another town before.
And I wholeheartedly agree with that, and, as a matter of fact, I think it should be a.
I know you've got four years of management experience in here, or, or we did last time, but this is in eight hours, but I think, um, of course, it says preferred, we don't want to make it so tight that we miss out on applicants, and, and, and so you.
You don't, I mean, it, but we can say, you say preferred, you can, I mean, you can tell me that, um, experience in a town of similar size will, will, um, rank somebody higher, I mean, we, we can get that nuances where rating applications, um, based on the profile and the evaluation criteria. But you don't want to, uh, one thing is the, the market's really tight right now, there are, there are a lot of openings, um, so, it's not the best time to advertise. Um, so, you don't want to lock yourself down too much, but you also want to. But you also want to be clear, right? You don't want to give people false hope, and you want to recruit the people that you want to recruit. So there's, it's a balance.
Let me ask you something.
Yes, sir.
What's the really difference between a town manager and a town administrator? We started out twenty years ago, Keith Landon was our town administrator.
Sure.
We changed when Matt Zapp got here to town.
Town manager.
Town manager.
Yes, sir.
It was before that?
Yeah.
Okay, well, well, really, some towns are still under that.
It's whether or not you're a mayor managed or a manager managed form of government. And the town's been a manager managed form of government for, oh, I don't know, twenty-five years? Something like that, since the nineties.
It's about the personnel responsibility falling to your chief executive rather than the board.
Whether or not the mayor is effectively running the town and the administrators doing some day-to-day stuff, or you have an elected board who is making policy, and then a manager who is carrying out that policy. Hiring and firing is one of the big distinctions, that kind of thing.
If you have a town administrator, I, I was your town administrator in nineteen eighty-two.
Okay.
I did a complete circle back. And my level of personnel authority was, was whatever the board gave me in terms of the leeway. You know, they would say, you know, the, the board says, we'll let you have a personnel, a personnel side up until this point. And when I was here in, in Benson the first time, I couldn't terminate anybody without the board to have given approval to do so. But that's the difference. The council manager form of government, the manager's authority is in state statute. And it spells out what their authority is, and it's primarily, like Lee said, in the area of personnel.
And, and that's what, that's what I want to know when, in the past, before this board was sitting here and I was sitting here, and they were, they were scared to come to anybody. They were told, you went to the town manager, if you didn't hear what you wanted to, that's as far as it went. I, I, I'm just trying to get some form of government to make this easier for everybody sitting here. So if there is a problem, I don't want to micromanage anybody out there. But if I've got a department head that is trying to tell you something as far as his funds and where are they, we need to know that before the fact and don't need to know it after the fact. That's why you're here.
Yes, sir. Then you need to find yourself a manager that will provide you the level of information that, that you need to have so that you can make those kind of decisions.
Well, that's fine. That's what, a big part of what I want to see in whoever we pick, that will be talking with us and letting us know, and we can talk with, with others.
So I'm hearing that communication is very important from the manager to the board.
This board, the board before, we did not have the communication that we needed.
Okay. I'm hearing, so, all right, we can, we can definitely, yeah, that is not in the profile right now. We will work on some communication pieces if the board's okay with that. I'm hearing from one, is the board.
Communication that.
Communication, okay.
I don't know why I thought I, I read it.
It is in there, it's on the first page.
Is it in the first page?
It's in the second bullet point on the first page.
Oh, strong, okay.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll beef that up a little bit, uh, active. Yeah, okay. We, we can add some language to that to make it really clear on what, and, and we can even design some questions and maybe even go beyond to help them demonstrate to you that they understand and what will they do. And then that way you can hold them accountable for what they're, for what they've said they're going to do.
But that would help me.
Yes, sir. I hear you. Can, can I go back to the grant piece? Because I don't want to lose that in the financial management. So I was hearing fin, a little, maybe a little bit more on financial management and grants specifically?
Handling, we've got grants, we've just got to make sure that we're handling the project in accordance to get it. Am I, am I correct in saying that?
I think. Yeah, I, I just think just, yeah. Proper local government financial accounting knowledge and background.
Okay.
I think that does need to be specific, local government. If you can have an accounting background in healthcare, it's totally different than local government. So I think.
So demonstrate, I'm sorry. So a demonstrated knowledge of local government finance and performance.
This is my thought on, I think, what Mr. Neighbors and Mayor Pro Tim was talking about. I think right now the ideal candidate would probably have a background from the finance department when they, it seems to me like there's lots of different avenues how you rise up to the higher management levels. The, probably the ideal candidate for them would, would have a background in finance as opposed to say, planning or something like that.
Okay.
There are different routes that we all hopefully knows. Some people start off in finance and become managers, and some start off in planning. Those are the two main categories of people moving into management.
So I'm hearing that you really want to double down on the finance background. So we need to really make, we, we need to really call that one out. Okay.
And how common is it to have the combination of financial, financial background and planning? Is that common or?
Yeah, you can have both. I have both.
Okay.
I, I came from the day when, when you, when you had a city treasurer, a town treasurer, and the manager did all the budgeting, so, you know, there's a difference.
If we can get a combination, it'd be great, but definitely local government finance.
How, how likelihood with as many openings as you says there are, and how bad of a time is it hiring? I mean, how many, I mean, when's the last time you did this for a municipality? How many applications do you think there were?
We did this.
I mean, last time, I think we got ten.
So when we talk about your benefits and salary, that's going to, that's going to have a big part of it. I think the fit with the board is going to be very important. The last community we work with, we worked with, the board didn't, the board struggled to understand their role versus the manager's role, and that really reduced the number of applicants. And so I think, I think being clear in, in candidates, you know, you know what your role is, you know what their role is, you're going to support them in the role, but you're going to hold them accountable. You know, demonstrating what a great place Benson is to live and to work, you know, all that stuff's going to play into it, and we're going to do our best to help you market that. You know, I, I think applicants versus qualified applicants also is a, is a key question.
I know this has always been a discussion of this board, and boards prior to this. What is the, what is you seeing, what, what are you seeing as far as managers willing to move to the municipality in which they serve?
It's a mixed bag. I think it's going to depend on family situation, if they're already maybe in the area, you know, and whether they would want to move. I think that's one of the things when we get into the matrix that we need to talk about. You know, are you going to require residency? I think that will reduce applications, right? But there are some boards that, that is very important to them. You know, some boards will say, well, maybe within thirty minutes or twenty minutes. All of those things will in, impact your, your applicant pool. I, I wish there was like a hard and fast rule, but it's, it's really everything put together. So we definitely hearing communication, finance, or is there anything else in this profile? Sorry, I also heard, I want to go back to the experience piece. Because I heard somebody say that having manager experience was almost, to them, a requirement. The way this is done now, you could get somebody that's a manager and assistant manager or a department head. Do you want to leave the experience piece as is? Do you want to up the number of years of progressive experience? Four to me seems like not a lot. But again, I mean, I'm, I'm hearing somebody that's experienced.
What, what would you, well, if four's not a lot, what would you typically recommend?
I mean, I, I would say you need to be at, you probably need to be thinking five to ten-ish years.
I think, I think no less than five. I think ten's a long time.
Ten, ten can be.
But I definitely see it out there, even in, in huge manager roles in healthcare, it's amazing. They, they do want five to ten, and a lot of them, if they require managers, they still want ten years.
Sure.
Maybe a minimum of five to ten, and then you would rate them based on how many years, right?
We could, yes. I think you're wise to say ten's probably too, I don't, I wouldn't recommend a minimum of ten. I think five to ten, you can hit that sweet spot.
I think we're going to have to increase our salary a lot if we go above ten. We just try to hit that.
Sure. All right. Five to ten, okay. Anything else on the profile? Okay. And, and we're going to, we're going to, we'll summarize this conversation, and we'll get this back to you. And if it doesn't meet what y'all think, you, you need to tell us. Please tell us, because we can come back and we can tweak. But I think this is a good start. All right.
So under certification, it doesn't say preferred, it does say desirable indicator. Does that need to change or?
On the certification for the credentialed manager?
Right.
It says desirable. I do think, you know, I think having that language in there is good. And if you have somebody, not everybody's a nicely made credentialed manager. So I think if you have that in there, and somebody has good experience, doesn't have the credential, it gives you the opportunity to go and bring them in. And it shows for managers that are, that are in the field, it shows that you all understand the role of the manager as well. Okay. Everybody okay now? Doing, doing my best, go as fast as I can. All right. Get the hook here at some point. So if you, if you back up, I think we're ready to go to the matrix. Elena, right? Okay. So the matrix that you have, which is the second attachment, it says current and proposed Benson manager compensation package, job ad, job ad background information worksheet. We like to get agreement on this in the front end, so that, one, we can put this into the, to the job ad. And we, you know, we've done several of these, believe it or not, and that, this is why we do this, because we've had some boards advertise a range and then make an offer, and then want the person negotiating to go below the range. And guess what happens? You lose the candidate. So having this down, I think helps everybody know where you are and where you're willing to go, helps the person that you're going to designate negotiating with that candidate know exactly what their guardrails are. If we get a month into this and we're like, uh-oh, we can come back and revisit this. But once we start interviews, we, this is locked in. You know, we may at that point, if you got the perfect candidate, right, and something doesn't match up, whoever's negotiating can come back to the board and ask for some adjustment. But that person and that candidate need to know what those guardrails are. So that it's very clear. So that's why we do this matrix, and we'll send this back to you. So that last column, I'm going to go line by line and get your input on what we need to put in that last column for all the stuff that's going to end up going into an employment agreement for your preferred candidate. So we'll go ahead and tackle the big one first, which is salary. So salary, I've got what the current was based on the employment agreement of the previous manager. And we just need to know where you want to go. So salary was at one eighteen-eight, and then I think with the budget, it was going to go to one thirty-six-six-twenty. For the salary, I also included a spreadsheet that compared all manager salaries that submitted a salary to the league municipality for jurisdictions between twenty-five-hundred and ten thousand. And the average salary was one thirty-six-three thirteen. Even if you threw out the highest and the lowest, it was still one thirty-six-two. So one thirty-six, which is where you're going to be, is, was about average. So have y'all thought about a range?
That Archer's Lodge was around one-ten in that. That's pretty close to this. Where are we, I mean, how wide of a range can we give? I mean, because about their range was from eighty-nine to one.
We can do one-twenty to one-eighty.
I mean, you, you can be.
We can't afford one eighty.
You can put it in the range, though.
You don't, you, you don't want to do something that, because a candidate's going to ask for the, for the max, or they should, or they may.
I kind of like where we, not where we were projecting to go, I kind of like where we were at one eighteen. I'm more of about the one hundred to one-twenty-five, maybe one-thirty range is the max. I don't know how that plays out with.
I think that's going, that's going to be tough.
That's going to be tough.
Then, then you got to look at department heads, the raise that they just got. How close does that bring them to that?
I mean, I, I know this is one of the harder conversations and decisions. I was in the one-thirty to one-fifty when I was sort of thinking, but again, it's.
That's the market.
The markets, I, I mean, that, you see the averages, you see what people are, you know, looking at. It's a tough job. It's very demanding. I think one-thirty to one-fifty.
A pleasure to work for.
And, and even with the most pleasurable board, it's a demanding job. It's, it's.
I always ask this every time you have to hire, every time we go through this process. What is the lifespan now of town managers? Because it has really changed since I've been on board.
What do you mean by lifespan? I'm looking pretty good. I know what you mean.
Yeah, what, what is there to mean now?
My gosh, yeah, it's, it's. It's four to five years. I think the, you know, I haven't seen any recent research on that, but what, I'm on the member support committee for the managers association, so we actually get the list of openings every two weeks. And about a year and a half ago, it had never been longer than maybe three-quarters of a page. It's now getting close to two pages. And so it's, it is, there are just, there are a ton of openings, ton of openings. And it's a combination, I think, right? It's, it's a combination of not as many individuals, unfortunately, going into the field. It's the environment of, that we're all having to deal with. You too, as elected officials, right? With, with sort of the state of public service right now, a lot of folks are retiring. So there's a lot going into that, but it's, it's a tight, tight market.
I'm fine, I'm fine personally with one-thirty to one-fifty range. I can just look at everybody else. I mean, I hope to steal another manager, you're going to have to be up there.
I, I know what City of Dunn just did, and, and they're just.
One-seventy-five.
Yeah, people are, are paying big prices to get the right people in, and I think you're going to. I think we're going to have a hard time finding the five to ten years, because they're, they're not staying. They're, they're moving. They're, they're moving along at three and four years. If you get a fi, if you get a ten-year person that's been in one place ten years, he's going to be there another ten years.
We're talking about ten years total, not ten years in one spot. You're talking about five to ten years of management experience. Not a municipality. He could be a manager for six years in three different communities and still need that five to ten years.
One that had five jobs in five years, would you want?
So I'm hearing one-thirty to one-fifty. Is there any objection to that?
I think you're gonna have to do that.
Okay. Got it. All right. So these, I think these may be a little, little easier to do, so the, the, um, we don't necessar- some of these we won't necessarily have to agree on tonight, so if you wanna think about some of these, we can do some of these. So the next few are ones that, um, you could probably think about. The, the manager's contract had that the salary increase eligibility was up to three percent salary increases, based on a performance review, October of each year, which I think was the higher date for the manager.
Right, that sounds right.
Is that a practice that y'all'd like to continue?
Yeah, typically we do it every twelve months.
All right. Good on that. And we can, some of these we can revisit. Those two aren't as critical. This one's critical. Uh, my assumption, my assumption is that you wanna provide health vision dental, um, to the manager. And one, I'm assuming that's a yes, and then the second one is, do you wanna provide it in a manner that is consistent with other employees of the town? Yes?
Yes.
All right. So we'll make sure everybody's okay with that. All right. Uh, family members may be added at the manager's expense. Four hundred dollar per month stipend if the employee opts out of coverage.
Uh, we can't do that.
No?
Uh, well, I reckon we could, but aren't we dealing with that right now with, uh, the police department? Uh, they opt out.
If you opt out of health insurance, then the towns typically give you some kind of stipend, if you opt out of the town's health insurance.
That's right.
I just, I, I just don't remember that.
It was in the contract.
It was in the contract.
I mean, I, I'm just saying I didn't remember. I just didn't remember.
Cause I think Fred took the stuff. I think Fred didn't have it. I think he didn't need the health insurance. I think he took the stuff. Maybe I'm wrong.
Kim took the stuff, I think. I think Kim took it.
Yeah, I mean, he could, she, I know she did, cause she went on Scott's insurance, and I don't remember correctly, cause it was cheaper in the town. Or better than the town. I don't know which. It was something, cause they work for the hospital.
Right, yes, right.
We can, um, we can revisit this one if we need to. The, the other thing, and I know, so this is a tight balancing act, but the, the manager, you know, is not subject to the personnel policy in terms of, you know, there's an employment agreement. So if there are things that you wanna do that aren't necessarily what is done for the rest of the town, the board can do that. Now, there are other implications of that, right? So, um, just wanted to say that. It sounds like we may need to think a little bit more about that one, or just strike it.
We may need to know a little bit more about it, cause I'm very.
What is the current cost per employee for the town's health insurance? Do we know that? Cause it didn't just increase?
No, what's the, Scott can be the better.
What's the current cost for an, for an employee, for the town's cost for us to cover an employee only in health insurance?
For health insurance, it's about six ninety-nine eighty-four a month. Six hundred and seven.
Seven hundred bucks? There's not, is that not including the increase that's coming, or was there, wasn't there an increase in cost this year, or something?
The increase that'll be coming will be the employee's share, not the employer's share, as far as we know at this point.
Okay.
So we're still, I, I think the, the board, the trustee, the state health plan will need some time to call this.
Oh, so it's the health line, okay.
So this stipend is actually less than what?
And it typically is.
It's less than what the town will be providing, what, it's less than what is being provided to the employees now the stipend is?
Yes, but that's a very complicated question. I would ask if we come back and discuss that.
Okay, cause I understand stipend, but.
I would recommend you come back and discuss that one.
Okay, all right.
All right, fair enough. All right, let's move on, um, sort of same questions. Disability and life insurance, same rate, term, and duration as other employees?
Yeah, I would, I would think so.
Okay.
Uh, uh, answer me this, cause you were here through the both managers, so like, and I think maybe, maybe some of this was done from the transition from Kim being a staffed employee to going to town manager. Did we make a lot of amendments to her contract versus what the previous contract was to include this? So Fred had the same thing?
Very similar.
And Matt had the same thing?
Matt's was different.
Okay, all right.
His was done originally in twenty-ten, or something. I'm all the way back.
Okay, all right, all right. I just wondered if we made a lot of changes in here, because Kim was transferring from a staffed employee to a contracted employee.
And I'll, I'll point out where in typical manager contracts, maybe there are some differences. This one is usually, it's the same, more often than not. All right. This is one that can, that can vary. So the, the vacation and the sick leave, well, sick leave really doesn't, but vacation. The contract with Kim was that it was provided consistent with other employees. You, you may have candidates that want to negotiate the vacation accrual, based on years of service that they have with the retirement system, or something like that.
What would a five to ten-year employee here get on vacation with their accrual? Cause it increases with tenure, I'm assuming, just like it does for me, so.
Different towns have different, have different policies on it, but by and large, if you get somebody that's got like five to ten years' experience, they're gonna wanna approve vacation at least at the same level they're accruing where they're coming from.
Right, okay.
So, but different towns have different accrual policies.
I estimate the question may be a little.
I think that's negotiable.
Negotiable. If you're willing to negotiate on that, we can note that, and then we'll deal with it when we have candidates on the vacation. Sick leave is, you know, it is what it is, cause it's tied to retirement. All right. So here's another one that can, we can just say, maybe it's, we'll talk more about it, and it's negotiable. Uh, that's a vehicle allowance. Um, so previous contract was a four hundred dollar a month, um, vehicle allowance, and then it was, then any trips outside of fifty miles, uh, was, uh, paid based on mileage.
Is that what you, what, what do you normally say standard? Is there?
It, it can range from three hundred to six hundred, just, and some of it's based on expectations of how much the manager is out and about. I certainly, you know, vehicle allowance is preferred to prefer, to providing a vehicle. I mean, I think four hundred is, is a good number probably to start off with, but you may wanna think about, maybe there's a range that you give the person.
I'm good with four to five hundred or so, or, or, I mean, for the right candidate, really, all of this is negotiable. We just wanted to put enough out there.
Yeah, I, I guess the biggest thing is, if there's something you're like, this is the number, and it's not gonna change, then we need, yeah, it's good to know that now. But if y'all are like, yeah, you know, we'll see who the candidate is, and we can negotiate, then we can, we can push some of that off. So I assume that the manager will be eligible for the local government retirement system, like other town employees. I certainly would recommend that.
Yes. Healthcare, right? Yeah, we're not in the healthcare, right? We're not in the local government healthcare system. Well, it's a system that we didn't sign up for.
We're of the state healthcare.
I thought that's it.
They didn't check the box for post-retiree.
That's the, that's what it is, but that's not gonna save the contract.
Yeah, that, all right. 401K contribution, um, consistent with other non-law enforcement employees, which I had, is a five percent contribution after sixty days of employment. That, that could be a negotiating opportunity as well, whether it starts immediately or at sixty days.
If I could, if you're hard to start immediately.
It is.
No sixty days.
Oh, okay. Okay, no sixty day delay, so, all right. Thank you. Appreciate it. This is good. Um, fifty dollar a month cell phone allowance. Good for that? All right. The contract talked about paying for reasonable membership fees for, uh, local civic clubs or organizations. Is that still something the board wishes to entertain?
I think we should continue that.
Yeah, I was about to say, I don't think it's really been utilized.
I'm not sure. I don't know.
Probably back in the days with Keith, cause he's in the Lions Club, we probably paid for.
So, let me ask a question. If we were to get a candidate that had the, the manager's certification, would that be part of something that the town would pay for?
Yes.
On a yearly basis? If we were to select someone that has it, could we add that to whatever this, um, like, instead of doing the club, could that be like part of it?
It could be part of the negotiation. I think, uh, that, the manager's certification is part of that manager being part of ICMA, which was covered in the, in the, um, in the contract, so supporting the manager for professional development, ICMA, State Managers Association, things like that. So yes, if the manager wanted to do some additional professional development, and civic club, you know, uh, again, I think it's preference of the board. Some of, sometimes the civic clubs are used to encourage the manager, support the manager to be involved in the community, right? And, cause some of those can be expensive, but again, it's up to the board. Again, we don't have to offer it, but knowing that you might be willing to talk about it with a candidate, I think right now is, is good enough. Or if you don't wanna put it on the table, we can take it out. What you think? We're almost there. We're almost there. And now it's been a long night. We're, we're getting close.
We'll pay for it.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll need to pay for it.
We'll leave that in the negotiation. All right. So, um, if, if you all were to decide to part ways with your manager, um, you know, not something that was criminal, you know, things like that, uh, in the con- current contract, there was a six-month lump sum severance package, including, uh, unused vacation time. And that, this could be a negotiation opportunity. Um, there may be some managers that will want nine, um, months or more. But again, I think we need to sort of, and we don't have to decide it tonight, but if you're hard, if you're set on six, we need to do that. If you're willing to think about a range, we can come back to it. I have nine, as an example, um, and again, it, it varies all over the, all over the place. I wouldn't go more than twelve. I would recommend that, but I think somewhere between six and twelve, six or nine is appropriate.
We could negotiate six to nine, you know, okay with that? Six to nine, you do with that?
Fine with it. That's what you've done in the past.
Okay. We would, uh, the contract requires a thirty-day minimum notice for the manager. I imagine that's probably a shorter timeline, um, for regular employees, but the manager position, because of what's involved. I s- I think that's very reasonable. I don't think any managers would be surprised by a thirty-day notice.
You think it should be longer?
I think you could try. Um, I think that may be a little bit of a sticking point.
Notice to that give to the board?
Right. I'm sorry?
Yeah, man, I'd make that longer.
Notice to quit.
Yeah, I'd, I'd make that all longer.
I think it's an, so if, if there's an issue with that, I think it's an honest conversation you have with the candidate. That's, uh, that's your preferred candidate, that, you know, what you, what you wanna see and what you wanna expect.
The way I feel about it is, if they wanna negotiate it to nine months breakaway, then we're gonna go with sixty days' notice if they wanna terminate.
Yeah, I mean, you want it, yeah. I mean, I guess a quid pro quo.
You want them to be here solid, man, but you don't want them to be here and be a problem for six.
Well, if, if, well, that, that doesn't, that doesn't apply if you terminate. That's if they say, hey, I found another opportunity, I'm leaving.
Sometimes resignation is an easier termination that you're.
Well, it could, and, and you can always waive that.
Yeah, yeah.
You can always waive it.
I'm not worried about negotiating this, that, uh, resignation. I think with your point, if you're, that's what you were making, is if they already checked out, and they have left, and you say, well, if I'm gonna give us ninety days, then, I, do you really want them to be here for another three months? I mean, you need to get some, better practices, get a competent interim in, and then they'll, you know, they're here to help you with their transition. I, I mean, Scott, what do you think?
Well, my position, I think it's thirty days. I don't, I don't think you want people wear, wear out their welcome. They're headed out the door, like they're leaving the home.
That's another good point. I mean, there's also thinking about the manager, you know, the lame duck thing, right? Hey, I've given my resignation, and, and employees are already thinking, well, this person might be the next manager. I might go to them rather than, you know, that happens too.
I'm good with thirty.
All right, thirty it is.
If I don't wanna be here, I don't wanna deal with them.
But I, I was saying, it is negotiable if they, if they were pushing for longer severance, you say, well, then.
They could use that in negotiation.
Then, then we need more leave, leave time from you too, so.
Yeah, certainly.
I, I, I.
Yes, ma'am.
Do have something I wanna add, and I don't know if anyone's thought about this, but I have. With these thirty-day notices, could it be added to the contract that you cannot take vacation time during that thirty days? Because if you do, you're not given a thirty-day notice.
They were given fourteen days.
You can get, you can say that, but that means you gotta pay them more, because you gotta pay them.
Yeah, you gotta cut, they, yeah, they either get that.
If you don't use the vacation, then you gotta pay them for the vacation.
You have to pay them for it anyway when they leave. I'm just saying.
Not if they take it.
Not if they take it.
What do you mean take it?
If you, if they give you a thirty-day notice, they take off two weeks, and you don't have to pay them for the two weeks that they took off of vacation, cause they used. If you give you a thirty-day notice, and you're required to work thirty days, or whatever day from that notice, whatever their vacation amount is, you've got to pay them for it.
That's right. You'll pay them two weeks more, basically.
It's six to one on the, on the money part, maybe, cause if you pay them for not being here, but they're still employed, and, or if you pay them a check to, cause, but they worked it out. I think the key thing is, and this isn't anything to get in at ten o'clock at night, maybe, and the, this is a finer detail we can talk about, and this is to negotiate with the right candidate, but, but to me, it's, uh, uh, you don't want them to say, well, I've got, yeah, I've been here a while. I've got two months of vacation, and your contract says thirty days, so I'll be here here and there, but, you know, and it's like, well, that's not really. What we need is somebody to see us through until we can get an interim. That's what you need, right? And a good interim, not just, well, uh, somebody. Let's just, I don't know, pick somebody, you know, cause that, that's not a good idea.
Charlie, you talking about Steve? Go ahead, go ahead and say it.
No, it, it, that, as far as what you're saying, that, that's my concern.
You're a little bit, did you go a little bit of circle with?
Yeah, that's it. Once you, once you've got, had them here long enough to fit, pick a suitable interim, whether in, within the organization, or find somebody outside, then let them, let them go on, right?
Yeah.
I, I, I think it's negotiable. I mean, for me, it is.
Yeah, I think that's the only conclusion to talk about.
And it's, yeah, I don't, I don't wanna belabor, it's gonna have a lot to do with the individual.
I think a lot of this is gonna work itself out. I think the big thing's gonna be the salary, and the vacation, and, and the benefits, and, I mean.
And, and we can re, we'll revisit this at a. Yeah, we.
What we're required in to live at.
That's the next one. That's what I just said, and the next one.
And the ne- oh, the residency? All right. As far as I could see, and, and I, um, if I'm incorrect, I didn't see anything addressing residency in the contract.
We changed that for her.
Okay.
It used to be.
It used to be, okay.
It was added within the corporate city limits of the town.
Ten-four. So that is.
Now you got fifty miles if you're a cop.
So that is, that is something we will want to put into the job ad, because that will be a question, whether residency is required or not. Where's residency required, but the board's willing to work with the individual, you know, on some amount of time? We, we, we need to say something about it in the job ad.
Myself, I, myself, I'm not speaking for them, I'm willing to work with the person, to be within thirty minutes.
All right. So I'm hearing a thirty-minute radius. How do others feel about that?
I didn't expect it. We just played, really?
You, you could say Johnson County, you could say thirty minutes, you could.
Well, I mean, if you put minutes on it, depending on traffic and all this stuff, or you're wanting to put miles on it, either way you wanna do it.
Miles makes more sense for you.
If you wanna put thirty miles on it, I'm willing to bet.
Somebody live outside Kinley, that's still in the county.
Probably thirty miles, cause they're gonna get somebody.
That's a good point.
I, I think thirty miles is probably a good thing. I, I think thirty miles is probably a good thing to start with. Maybe put residency, you know, city residence preferred, but thirty miles considered, you know, then thirty miles considered.
It's like, it's still like.
I would prefer that you live in town, but you can't, ain't like we got a bunch of houses in town either.
Thirty miles? We'll, we'll put that in there, and then, and when you see it in a few days, and the completed, if, we've still got time to change it, so we'll start off with thirty miles. All right. I think, I hope these will be a little easier. Not, I mean, y'all done great, especially at ten o'clock. So, have y'all, so obviously, when you make an offer, somebody needs to reach out to that individual and do the negotiation. Many times, that's your chief elected official. Sometimes, sometimes it's.
Our attorney?
Our attorney.
The attorney, doing the negotiating. So I think we want to have that nailed down. I, what I would say, if you want the attorney to negotiate, that's up to the board. I wouldn't have the attorney be the one to make the call to say, hey, congratulations. I think that probably should be the chief elected official, just my experience. But, hey, I'm the attorney. Here's the job offer.
I think the mayor should go and offer a position, and then say our attorney will follow up and specify the terms of our agreement.
Everybody okay with that?
Contract to contract anyway.
Are you talking about averting that, where you negotiate and then, or is it, has he got it right?
Yes, I think he has. Unless y'all want to do it, I.
I think that's easier, because we're not, I'm not mayor, but if I was, I wouldn't be able to remember paying to put in your contract.
That's, that's the way we've handled it generally.
Congratulations, and our town attorney would be in touch with you.
You're our guy, or you're our guy, and now.
Yep.
Lawyer will be in touch with the, with the particulars.
Okay.
I think it's appropriate for the mayor to do the job offer.
I agree. So let's say, so the attorney's going to have these guardrails. Y'all have selected somebody to be your candidate. They get through everything. There's one sticking point that is not within the guardrail. What, if it's salary, or vehicle, whatever it is. My assumption is that you all as a board will want to have the attorney approach you and say, hey, we've got everything done except this one thing. What do you think? And then y'all weigh in.
Yeah, I think that's good.
Okay. All right. Very good. There's a reason why I'm asking these questions, because as we've done this, these issues have come up, and so.
I, I will not do anything outside of your guardrails.
I understand, I know.
I'm not that guy.
That's why we wanted to make sure that, that was clear, and that the board understood, and we're all good. Okay. So where to place the ad? So there are the sort of usual suspects where most folks who are looking for these types of jobs are going to go to. League of municipalities, the government job site. The league is a two hundred dollar fee. Gov jobs is no cost through Central Pines. Let me skip LinkedIn and Indeed for a second. ICMA is four fifty. We will also be doing some things that don't cost money, just time, reaching out to candidates, talking to the network, pulling people by their, by their hand and their coat to say, hey, this is a great opportunity, you need to apply. We'll do that. Are there any other local, sometimes there are local places that our board really wants us to advertise? Are there any places, we'll come back to Indeed and LinkedIn, but are there any other outlets that you want us to advertise in?
I don't think so. Do you P Y P?
Joko.
Joko Report.
The Joko Report? Okay. Do that.
No, they'll put it up there.
They'll put it up there. We're being.
But that's, yeah.
They're going to put an article about Steve on there.
No, I think, I think foreign rap, foreign line.
Foreign line.
Foreign line, whatever the best thing for the book.
We can, we can consult with your HR professionals as well to see if there's any places that you know get good traction.
Could I make one suggestion?
Yes, please.
The Virginia Municipal League.
Great suggestion.
Virginia Municipal League.
Yep.
There's a lot of that, there's a lot of traffic going back and forth between Virginia and North Carolina. Also, if someone retires in Virginia, a manager, they can come to North Carolina and work, and they don't lose their retirement in Virginia. So you might get somebody who's got like twenty years of experience, who's retiring, and would like to make that move to North Carolina. So, the Virginia League, and it's not very expensive either.
No, no.
I think it's like the same thing as the league, two hundred dollars.
Okay. Great suggestion. Okay, so we have seen mixed results from the LinkedIn and the Indeed, and it costs quite a bit of money.
I've had poor experience in Indeed with my business.
I was about to say, I wouldn't go with Indeed.
Yeah, because, you know, when you're a manager, you're looking at the league, and it, LinkedIn and Indeed is based on how many hits, yeah, clicks you get. So, we ran in this with a town, they, one of the elected officials called my staff member on Thanksgiving, wanted to know why the ad still was not on LinkedIn, and we were like, well, you ran out of money. Well, it needs to be on Thanksgiving. People are going to be searching on Thanksgiving. Well, it's going to cost more money. I don't care, do it, so we want to get that cleared out.
People with experience that we're looking for know where to look for these jobs, and I don't think they go to LinkedIn.
I, I don't think you can get a lot of value out of those.
I've seen none of Indeed, I've seen a few on Indeed, but not a lot of town managers.
All right. Tell you what, we're going to punt on the background check item. We can deal with that another day. Are there any questions? So, in summary, what we are going to owe back to you after tonight's meeting, and we, we will have it back to you next week, early next week. We'll have a finalized schedule. We will have a draft. Just make sure I'm telling you all right. It's been a long night for me, too. Yep. We'll have a draft, we'll begin working on a draft job advertisement. We'll probably go ahead and send the profile back out with some adjustments, but your staff's been really great to work with. We already have some really great pictures and other things, so we're going to start working on the design part. And our, our goal will be to be back here on the twelfth with a draft job ad and the evaluation matrix. So that's where we can get into, well, how much is the financial piece going to weigh versus economic development and things like that? Does that sound good? Any questions? Thank you for your attention. I know this was long, but it'll, I think, be a little shorter after this one. Madam Mayor, pro temp. If there's no questions, thank you.
We do appreciate you coming.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you all. Appreciate it. Thank you, Lee. Thank you.
Next, I, I need a copy of that. I didn't get one.